Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. With the land acknowledgement, we acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight. Traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Maydans, and Inuit peoples. Connection to the lands, their history, language, and culture. So right off the hop here, we got two councillors coming in by Zoom. And councillor Capitanic gives her regrets. She won't be making it today. And councillor Cromwell will be joining us shortly. So from there, we'll move the meeting on to approval of agenda. Reeve Holland.
Thank you. I'll put the motion through, of course, for the approval of the agenda. However, if council is game, I would like to add an item, the FCM Canada-wide impact of terrorists on municipalities. Meeting tomorrow morning at nine AM just to have that conversation for any input.
So, good morning. So you want to put that under?
New business, I guess, or items into the agenda number nine?
Okay, number nine point one. And that's FCM. C M discussion.
Right.
Uh, go ahead councillor Hall.
I'd like to add the a brief discussion around the letter that many chief and chief elected officials have received from Minister Ellis for discussion, given that it meets the requirements of being both emergent and urgent.
Okay, nine point two.
And I recognize we don't know a lot, but I think it's important to have a beginning of a discussion and it may require future follow up.
Yeah, that's the that's the biggest thing. We don't really know a lot of what's going on. And I think there is a meeting that's going to be happening after with the CAO, if I'm correct.
Mr. Chairman, trying to organize one while we're in the meeting. So I hope there is.
Oh, okay.
But I, under nine point two, I can provide anything I know.
Okay, it sounds good. Councillor Anderson.
Being that the committee can't, we're told we can't make decisions or set. Council's priorities. I think that both nine point one and nine point two would be better off being held off and a special council meeting being called after this. Or early tomorrow morning to discuss both items where council could then make a position on both topics.
I guess, I guess regarding that though, we're not, I think it's just a discussion where we're going to have heads up. We're not really going to make a decision on what to do. FCM is just so we can listen to it. And and this other one, we've already heard from our CAO and said that there's not a lot of information on it yet. So until I think he organizes a meeting, we don't really know what we're going to respond with. But Reeve Holland, you had your hand up?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I was going to just say the exact same thing. I think it's purely a, these are just discussion matters. Nothing is really going to be decided upon our action taking.
Yeah, can we, can we still put it on here? And then if we decide to call a special meeting, I guess we can call a special meeting. But I think we're just going to have discussions on it. Unless you got something that you want to throw forward automatically.
I'm opposed to it, but I can vote opposed to it as well.
Yeah, okay. I think we'll just leave it into the the discussions here on items added to the agenda. So. Uh, regarding that, we have a motion on the floor to accept the the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
So that, yeah, and opposed. So that is seven and one. Motion carries. So motion to go into closed. Councillor Cromwell has made the motion to go into closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. So we just came out of closed and now we're going to have, actually, we're have a recess for for about what, seven minutes? And about, yeah. Eleven oh seven, we'll be back.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll resume the agenda here. Uh, we'll go to four point one, approval of the minutes. Councillor Chamsik has made the motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting of the whole meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Councillor Hall? Are you there? So that would be seven and zero. Uh, motion, motion carried. So we have a delegation coming in eleven thirty AM. It's not that time yet, so we'll go to item six, six point one. Action item list discussion. Anybody want to start? Okay, go ahead councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I have a few items I'd like to ask. Well, first one's on page twenty seven of your agenda, related to road bans and resolution number CC twenty four sixty seven. Would it be possible to get an update or through the Chair to Administration to ask when we can expect to see the new amended traffic bylaw come into council?
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, don't know when I have time to work on it.
Okay, okay.
Um, next item. There's some pages here. On page thirty two of the agenda. Um. Items CW twenty four one fourteen, CW twenty four one twenty six are asking for proposed land use bylaw amendments and procedural bylaw amendments to come to committee of the whole. And I'm wondering when those will be here as well.
Um, at a future date for sure. We've identified some more pressing items than than the ones that we originally talked about. And so the pressing items have to do with area structure plans and outline plans. So we're working on bringing something to council in the future on that.
Wonderful. And then, uh, resolution CW twenty four seventy one was to table the motion until after public consultation on the cemetery mowing program has been completed. I'm just wondering, since that was from May of twenty twenty four, did we do any public consultation on the cemetery mowing program? Or is that something we're going to be doing this year?
Mr. Chairman, uh, none has occurred. And we would actually ask council for a refresher on that. Like, who would we be consulting with that, on that? The general public or just cemetery owners or, you know, like, who would you like consultant? And what would you ask them?
I guess we had, through our last survey, on on the budget, I think, wasn't it? That we had a bit of feedback regarding cemetery mowing program, but not not a lot. And and we didn't really have a discussion about it after. So I don't know if council still wants to have a discussion. Councillor Chamsik first.
Well, as a follow up.
Oh, okay.
I'd be willing to make a motion to recommend a county council to discuss the public consultation process, so that council can either rescind this motion or give the clearer direction to administration. I don't think it's something that we want to just continuously let sit on the action item list. If administration needs clearer direction or council wants to reconsider, I think. I'd be willing to make a motion to get it to council so that we can make that happen.
Of course. Okay, I'll try to write that motion down. Councillor Chamsik?
Well, if that motion's going on the table, that's all right. That is. Question can happen there.
Yeah, I think I got that wrote down. Any other discussion? Regarding, we'll, we'll, we'll make that motion after we discuss more on this, or how do you want to do that? Yeah, okay. Okay, well, while we have the motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend a county council to discuss resolution CW twenty four seventy one and give clearer direction regarding the cemetery mowing program and public consultation.
It sounds good. I don't think I have to read that motion back. So do you have that?
Up to give clear direction regarding the cemetery mowing program, public consultation.
Hey, thank you. Um. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm pretty sure that is eight and oh, so move that one forward. And now any other discussion on the action list? Go ahead.
Um, I think the spirit of maybe this action list and with regards to the the heavy workloads that we're facing, then maybe we can also have a discussion on picking out our priorities of what we really want to see as the top ones that administration needs maybe help to focus on or whatever. How we want to handle that. And I'm hoping we can have that bit of discussion today so that we can maybe make this a little bit easier for for everybody to understand what's going to take place and when. And hopefully council has an idea of what their priorities are. I wanted to mention a few other items that maybe possibly we could rescind. And a couple of questions that we're looking at. So the very first one that I looked at on page twenty seven was with Athabasca Landing Trail CC two three six five three. As we know, this was a motion from twenty twenty three. And when I look at that and it says, you know, the discussion item on trails and trail strategy to a future committee of the whole meeting. I think we can all agree that being that this was a twenty twenty three item, it's not something that we're going to see as a as a main priority. And it's only the priority in the in our strategic plan is it be added to the think tank kind of scenario. We do have, we were successful in in forwarding a memorandum of understanding there. And there is also a master plan with regards to the Athabasca Landing Trail. And so I'm wondering if the if council might be interested in rescinding this particular motion until we revisit strategic planning.
But.
I wouldn't be in favor of rescinding, but I do think that maybe reconsideration or look at it again and forward it, make sure that it lands on the service level discussion. That's, I think, trails are a service that we are providing. Maybe that's another thing that we'll get pushed to that discussion to make sure that it happens there.
And in doing that, is there a change to this motion or an additional motion to refer to this motion? I'm just trying to figure out what's the easiest way to get get it through so that we can hammer off some of these items off this list. I agree, level of service is a great place for this to go. And is that something maybe we just put a motion through that that resolution number CC two three six five three recommend to council to include in a level of service agreed discussion? That's where we're at. You want to get a motion now? Yeah.
Uh.
And that would take that off of the action item listeners referred to that, right?
Well, I I'm not sure how the how administration wants to administrate this item list in that case. If we're moving it to a level of service, can that come off here or does it remain here? I don't really know what's the best option there.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not too sure the best way to handle that one. I think the bigger discussion is um, committee or council, you really have about seven or eight months until the next election. Um, and really some work shuts down a couple of months before the election. Let's be honest, things get busy with other things. What are the top five to ten things you really need figured out between now the and the election? Because these eight, these eight pages or ten pages probably aren't going to happen. Um, so it's fine to hand them off to the next council. That's good. Um, but there's there's some things that this council would really like to see happen. And in what order, if you know what I mean. And so maybe there needs to be a discussion about that, I think. Could we prioritize these in some manner so we know which ones are most important for council? Uh, for to for us to be working on for council. Otherwise, we're not going to get much done and and we might be picking the wrong objective. We might be working on something on page thirty two. And the rest of council is kind of going, why are we even working on that anymore? No one's called me about that in in a year and a half. So it would really give us some direction. That's great.
Thank you. Uh, I want to thank you for that CEO back because I know that with this many motions on the plate, exactly that, we're not going to get, we're not going to do all these. There's, there's, there's just no, no way. And and that, and I think we do need to mark down some priorities for administration to be able to move forward with them. And with the amount of work this afternoon in administration right now, it's also quite evident that we don't want to keep bombarding more and more. Can you do that? It doesn't seem like a big thing when we move a little motion forward, but it actually takes away time from what it should be spent at doing. So, um, we have some, some big issues, I know. I'll give it back, floor back to the Reeve Holland, because I know she's got some priority she wants to put forward.
Thank you. So just, we'll just back up with regards to the other one. Are we going to, before we move on to, you know, deciphering priorities? For the Athabasca Landing Trail, level of service discussion, exactly, it was on the strategic plan, etc. I'm, I am very much in favor of rescinding this at this point. If we want to create a new motion to go forward with a level of service discussion and that, that there's several level of service discussions that are in this already, and that's going to be a huge, that should be a day in itself, as far as I'm concerned. So that, that's, I'd like to just know where council's at. I'm, I'm quite happy to rescind that motion. I'm quite happy to create a new motion to forward it to the level of service.
I would be, I'd be in agreement with that because it's going to be a long drawn out conversation anyway. It's not going to be a quick. Uh, and and we should do that level of service, so.
I agree with that. I think our level of service to our conversation is going to be an all day affair. And I think that's the appropriate place for it.
Okay, so if we can put a motion, if you're, if I'm okay with that, the motion forward to recommend a county council to rescind CC two three six five three and to forward the trails and trail strategy to a future level of service discussion.
So let's take care of this motion and then we can move on again. To rescind CC two three dash six five three. Uh, and move, move the motion to the level of service discussion.
Move trails and trail strategy to a level of service discussion.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Everybody understand it? So that's recommend the county council to remove that, rescind that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried eight, no, thank you.
May I follow up?
You bet you can follow up.
Thank you. Um, with, I'm just going to quickly run through, I have a few questions here, but I do have a priority listing. So I don't know what you want to hear first, but I'm hoping I can get rid of a few more of these on here. Um, the next one again, I just was curious about the second one down on page twenty seven, CC two three six six eight. I believe that's in progress, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
It is, Mr. Chairman.
So just, we just leave it there with that.
Since it's being worked on.
Yeah.
And I would say it's more than fifty percent complete, this list. There's some chance of bringing it ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um. One item down from that is CC two three seven one three. A twenty twenty five construction plan is a priority for me. I don't know where everyone else is sitting. I don't, wouldn't say it's number one, but it is definitely a priority that I would, I would consider. So I put a P beside that one for priority.
It's just that one.
That is CC two three seven one three, third one down on page twenty seven. Okay, so that one I had as a priority. Um. The item that with regards to the helipad site assessments, town and village to table this item until a further presentation from the community group and stars, uh, CC two four one four one. Is council interested in rescinding this item because we're Because we're moving into different directions with regards to the conversations that are taking place with our urban partners. Are we interested in rescinding that?
I support that.
All right, so do we put that motion through? Oh, I have, we have a, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilor Wallack.
Thanks, just because this wasn't on our radar coming into this meeting, it wasn't on the agenda to set priorities. I'm wondering if we can table this conversation to the next one, so we all have a chance to go through it.
Yep.
I I guess. As was just mentioned, we are running out of time. With regards to the next few months, we have six committee of the whole meetings left. In this whole conversation, these agendas come out. With regards to having the time to look at these action item lists to determine our questions, to bring forward what our concerns are. And I think that if we could just continue the discussion in what some of these priorities look like. And and give administration some direction, it would be very beneficial. We always have the opportunity to, you know, this is a recommendation. To council and so we always have that opportunity to come back and say, hey, you know what? I didn't like that or I like this instead. So I hope we can can carry on with this conversation.
Well, I think we can carry on with the conversation because we're trying to get the items off of the action list plus even come up with some priorities. And then if we, if we. The next committee of the whole meeting, we want to, we're going to discuss the action item list again. I'm sure that if all of a sudden somebody thought of a priority that wasn't being looked at, we can discuss it there again. So. I would like to. Actually utter today's discussion and at least move something forward so administration knows what. Us as council are are looking forward to get done. Instead of being all over the map here. Would that work for you, Councilor Wall?
Well, I just feel like we're all over the map right now, so.
Well, we're going to be all. I I think we'll be all over the map until we actually have this discussion. And and try to narrow this down to. To a workable list. Because the list is all over the map and that's what that's what administration is looking for is to come up with. Kind of like a path that they can go down on. And and try to, try to. Finish off some of these items that they know that's important to council.
Mr. Chairman. My gut tells me if we don't do this in a strategic or a tactical manner today, we could be here all day just on this one item. I would recommend you. If there's anything you need an update on today out of the action list, let's do that as you normally do. Otherwise, let's punt this to another committee meeting a month from now or or sometime in the future. And we'll recommend you maybe some paths forward on how we prioritize. Some of these items so that we actually are doing the things the council wants us to do between now and the end of your term. That's all. And and leave it to us, we'll propose a process back to you, maybe to expedite. This review, how's that?
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, no, that's that's fair to me because it's like, yeah, no, you're exactly right. We'll just keep doing this dance around the stable until. Tonight at six o'clock, so, so. So, okay, so we're going to still go through the action item list real quick here and and then and then. Like CEO said, he'll bring back maybe a. A path that they feel that we should be going down and and for the next committee of the whole, thank you.
May I continue? All right, so I guess we'll. Like I say, I I think we could have pounded pounded through some of this quite quickly. With regards to status, I have other questions, but I guess if we're going to go forward with that. I'll just make the comment that. Priority priorities are are definitely for me, easy to pick out of here. That would be a construction, that would be the intergovernmental relations agreements, funding agreements as well as water. And the rest of this, I believe that we can. We can hammer out as time permits, but those are my top priorities. I do have status questions, but. We do have a delegate coming, so I'll just leave that off the table for now.
But if you want to go through some of those questions. Okay. Okay, any more questions regarding the? Action item list right now, or do you or do you want to table this until after the delegation?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to table this discussion until after the delegation. And we go from there. Don't think there's a vote on table. Yeah, okay. All in favor of tabling this until after? Sure, all opposed? Nay, rose. Ready to go. Okay, so we are moving into the delegation. With five point one. Mr. Gabriel. Hopefully I got your name right. So, so I'll, we'll go around and introduce ourselves and then we'll get you to introduce yourself. Please use the mic when when you're and and that you bet you put the mic on in front of you. Yeah, that's it and you got about the delegations are about fifteen minutes, so. Use your, use your time wisely, I guess, and we'll go from there. Counselor Cromwell.
Good morning, welcome, Jerry Cromwell, Division Six, far north up to including the Wandering River area. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Joe Gerelock from the Rochester Parable area, Division One.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for coming today. My name is Tracy Holland, counselor for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca as well as Reebok County.
Good morning, Rob Menz, Division Eight, Updies Lake Island, Lake area.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, Grassland, Cross Vita, Atmore areas.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division Three, Casan area.
Oh, just a minute, Counselor Hall, you there?
Brown Hall, I reside in Division Four.
Morning, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Okay, and then we'll go around and and introduce yourselves. Jordan, you want to start?
Hi, I'm Jordan Schenkelberg, I'm the communications coordinator.
I'm Tammy Plard, I am the recording secretary.
Bob Beck, C A O.
And then behind you that they don't have mics. Krista Wilkinson. I think development services, Shawdy Ambly. Corporate services and Lord knows. Diane Clucci. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Reeve Holland and council members. Thank you very much for seeing me today. I hope everyone can hear me. I'll just speak up because I'm. I don't want to be standing in the way of the presentation, okay? But we'll get right to the heart of the matter. Situation has changed with the family property that we've had since nineteen sixty one, a gift from my father. Who never actually got to set foot on the land, but. This land. Has now become inaccessible because of some changes made by one of our neighbors, which is fine. Can't fault them for that, but we'll get on with it. The landing question is this little quarter section immediately east of part of North Buck Lake. The part that includes. Scenic acres and Little Gibbons, if you're familiar with the area, we're just south of the provincial campground, which is to the north here on this peninsula. As I said, the land was purchased in nineteen sixty one by my father as a gift to the family and. And we've been going there. Forever, just using the land as it is. We haven't had any aspirations to develop it other than to keep it. As a place that we could call a private campground, for lack of a better term. Okay, so there is some development around us. The Sam and Catherine such, many years ago, they purchased a lot of the lakefront property and areas around the lake. And converted them into recreational properties, a kind of trailer park kind of by concept. C N S Parks is the current name, I think of the operation. And we had a fantastic arrangement with our neighbors where they allowed us to use this road here. To access our land. Sam said, hey, whenever I'm bringing in some gravel, I'll just throw a couple extra loads down for you so you can get across the sand. Loved him. Anyways, they passed away about ten or fifteen years ago and. Passed the land and the operation down to their children, Bill and Arlene such. Now, if you look at the land here, we are kind of in the middle of no man's land. We've got neighbors to the east. A couple of neighbors to the west, some to the south. This is crown land here and every single. Property owner around us has access to their own land. We don't. And that's the nature of today's discussion. This is one of the examples, so an approach going into L. Michael's property. This is the road that we used to use to get to our land through the such property. And at the end of this road, again. I can't fault them for wanting to put up a gate because this used to let everybody into the crown land. And on their way through, they would drop off their renovation waste, their broken toilets, their kitchen counters and cabinets. And I've been cleaning that up for over forty five years now. So I don't mind them having a gate here that actually cuts down the bad guys, the bad actors. But it does create that problem that we no longer have that access. So I've spoken to a number of people around. Unfortunately, our neighbors are not agreeable to allowing us an easement. They just want to protect what they have. I totally understand that. So the only logical. Access that remains is this road allowance that runs to the corridor, to the southwest corner of our quarter section. It's fully treed. It's difficult to even walk through on a good day. And I've spoken to other members of council and land people, et cetera. If if this road allowance were to be developed by the county. The cost to me would be somewhere around hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. And then the county would be responsible for plowing it, for maintaining it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The biggest problem is I would not be able to put a gate where I'd like it to be. I'd have to put a gate here, which leaves my neighbors to the northwest and to the southwest vulnerable. To five hundred and fifty meters of unwanted trespassing traffic and it's the same kind of yahoos that have forced. Bill and Arlene to shut their gate. So the solution that I'm going to propose is that somehow we come to an agreement with the county where. I purchased this road allowance that actually serves no other purpose than to give us access to that land. If we go back a couple of slides right here. It doesn't go anywhere but to our property and everybody else has their access to the south, to the west, to the east. To the north is more crown property and what they call Little Buck Lake, it's glorified slew. But I like it anyways, so. So that is. The recommendation that I'm making with your blessings, I would like to enter into some kind of agreement where we purchase this. We develop it to our specifications, which are nowhere near what the specifications would be required by council and the county. I'm sure the county is not interested in building roads. I think I heard that earlier. You're not in the business of building roads, so let's just take a look at this screen. The our property is this one right here, this little quarter section. And this is actually the plan that was done by the original survey back in nineteen twelve. And here's our, for for just a little bit of reference, Caslin to the south, North Buck Lake, I've colored it a little bit. But if we zoom in to my little Greenland. That section is mostly muskeg, about two thirds of it is muskeg, which makes it very difficult. For anybody to develop to any kind of standard. We just want a skidoo trail, something I can ride in, try and maybe squeeze my. Chef Silverado out there without scratching it up too bad. But also for security, I'd like to be able to put a gate right there at the township road one, seven, three. A, I think it is. So to summarize, I didn't want to throw all of these up to you at one time, but. We have been paying the residential taxes on the property for, well, since nineteen sixty one at least. And that's gone towards improvements in the county, schools, roads, et cetera. But where our land is actually off the grid, we don't have any power, no water, no sewer and now no road. Without access, we can't protect our land, we can't patrol it, we can't clean up, we can't do anything. I mean, you know, it's it's kind of useless. It's nice to look at pictures, but rather be there listening to the owls and coyotes. Bears. The road allowance is, like I said, about two thirds of it is muskeg. It's not attractive for anybody to develop, but. I'll take it on if I can have that privilege with your blessing. Through the road closure. The county would have no responsibility to maintain it. We just put a gate there, maybe some cameras and be be able to provide some security. One of the fringe benefits, one of the side benefits would be. Going back to. This picture, okay, if something were to happen somewhere up here in the backwoods. It's about a six kilometer ride through the bush to get from eight thirty one, I believe it is, to gravel road. That's at the east edge of, I know I'm off the map here because that's how far it is. But that gravel road to get into this area, it's a long way and it's difficult. And there was actually a tragedy where a lady, a senior citizen flipped a quad. Wound up getting severely injured. She didn't die on sight, but it took the E M Ts quite a while to get there. If we had a road. Just any kind of standards, it gives another access point. If first responders had to get to our land or the lands, the crown lands beyond. So that sums up the story. Are there any questions? We hope I'm within time here.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that presentation. Is there any questions for Mr. Gabriel? Regarding access. Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Thank you for your presentation and for coming in to speak to us. So I understand that the idea of a road closure and a lease has also been proposed to you as a possibility, but in the presentation. You only talked about private ownership. Can you? Can you speak to that and why one's more attractive than the other?
Well, I understand in the case of the lease. What has been suggested as a long term lease would be like three to five years. That doesn't give any peace of mind to us over the long term for my children or their children who are now starting to enjoy the land. As as much as we can when we walk in carrying our, you know, our water and our. as as much as we can when we walk in carrying our, you know, our water and our food. Um, we we would like an enduring solution to this problem and to add that road allowance to our to our title uh would really kind of grease the wheels and and give us some peace of mind that something isn't going to change down the road. And again, put us in the same situation where I have to come speak to the to the county. But I I hope, does that answer the question?
Thank you.
Okay, any other? Any other just questions or? Go ahead, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you. Can you speak to the development you currently have on the property and how emergency access would be? Like, would emergency access be possible if there was a fire or anything on this property at the current time?
At the current time, um I if emergency, if first responders had to get into the land, they probably have to knock down the gate that that uh uh Bill and Arlene put up. Um, our gate would be built to the same standards, okay? We want to make it quite obvious that everything beyond here is private property, but if first responders for some emergency fire, whatever, had to get in, knock it down. Or bolt cutters or whatever it is that's required, um it that you saw the late the 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 lock mechanism on the gate that Bill and Arlene had put up. Those are pretty secure, but I'm sure with the right kind of zip cutter, you could get through the bolt. Uh, other than that, I I can see no other way to get in there other than coming from the far side, which again is unreasonable. You want?
Thank you very much um for your presentation and the information you provided to us. I was just curious about the undeveloped road allowance that's to the north of your property. Um, that I'm looking at on page, while on our agenda package is page twenty-three um from your slide. Um, we keep going, it would be keep going. Yeah, you can see it there, so on the northwest corner, there's an undeveloped road allowance there, is that not something else that could be considered as an access?
The challenge with this is right behind, unfortunately, I don't know if you can get that.
I can see it on the the lake, yeah, I can see the lake here.
Yeah, um, all the land around this is barely firm enough to support tree.
Okay.
Because it's very good, it's it's low line pretty much from, I'm going to say from about this line up to here. It's more slew than anything else, uh slew to muskeg. Um, and that water has been disappearing, maybe in another hundred years, it will be dry enough that we can build a road there, but not now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any any other questions? No one, no one online's got any, Counselor Gerlock.
Is there any reason why a lease would be of of any specific term? Why would at least in this particular instance not be an enduring lease until something actually came up where it was required? For some purpose.
You want, yeah, that would be through administration, but but uh yeah, we can, we we can discuss this later, I guess we're just with the with the delegation, we're just uh uh looking for questions and then we can discuss what could possibly happen later on. And and at the end of our meeting on uh uh eight, eight point one, so is there any other questions to Mister Gabriel? The go ahead.
I I I do have a point to make to that, um. The uh the the concept of lease has been presented and we we did kick it around for a while. Uh, I don't know if that would give us the same uh kind of, call it runway to be able to put a gate here. Um, and for the for for there to be any kind of term, maybe another consideration might be to include in the sale a buyback clause. Where if for some reason that road allows ever became value to the county, they could, the county could buy it back, maybe that's something that could be discussed, but really um it's half a kilometer of muskeg. What value does it provide to the county? Is the question that uh that I'd be asking.
I I I just want to make one comment here, I we don't have the authority to sell that road allowance. That is actually, that road allowance is owned by the crown. And to actually close that road allowance is going to be uh would be a huge stepping stone. That that I'm just giving you a little information there, we don't, we don't own the road allowances, we are the maintainer of the road allowances. And uh it's still owned by the crown, so.
Okay, um. There, someone had had a discussion with the crown. If they have any objection to to such purchase, and there was no objection either to that or to the road closure, correct me if I'm wrong on that. And I know that there's a cost, which we're willing to take, but the cost of not doing something right now means I can't go there.
Okay, well, we'll 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 discuss that uh uh later on in in uh eight point one hundred new new business, so so if there's no other questions uh from council or or anything.
Sorry, I just have one more, and of course you'll know the lay of the land way better than I, so I I was just again off of six, five, four, at the bottom of that page, there's another road allowance, uh of course, to the south, yeah. Is there, is that land also uh not favorable for road construction?
It's the same kind of thing, um okay, but that that muskeg portion is pretty much right where the corner of the quarter section is. And this is a much longer stretch, which would be I don't know what worked out to a couple of hundred bucks per foot, is the cost of developing the road, that adds up really quick. Um, like I said, we 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 have no aspirations of building anything more than what could support that Chevy Silverado or skidoo in the winter or trike or quad in the summer. Um, I think they call it field access, so.
Okay.
But there's really, there's no, there's nothing going on there commercially, it's just a place to be.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, um. See you no more, thank you very much for for your presentation and everything, and we'll be discussing it later, you're 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 okay to stay if you want to stay in the discussion, or you can find out from administration after what what's been kind of decided.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Appreciate your time.
So it is uh ten to twelve, and I know lunch is here. So before we uh do anymore, do we want a break for lunch? See, we come back at quarter after twelve. Sound good, okay, thank you.
So we'll reconvene the committee of the whole meeting and go back to the table item of uh roundtable discussions, action item list and Reeve Holland had the had the floor right down.
Thank you. Um so I guess just in the last um I I understand what was being said, but just to finish off the last item that I had recommended uh as a motion to recommend to county council to rescind uh CC two four dash one four one, which is on page twenty seven of your agenda package.
So we have a um motion. We may as well look at this with you have a motion on the floor right now to recommend to rescind motion uh recommend the county council or send motion CC twenty four dash one four one. Uh any discussion regarding that. Seeing none uh all in favor of motion? All opposed?
No.
So that would be five five uh four one against motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And if I may just finish off. Okay, great. Um so through the chair to administration, um just asking on the that same page, the very last item. Um CC two four dash three two five uh status on that one, if there is one to direct administration to proceed with the demolition of the derelict properties as presented in close session.
Yes, um Mr. Chairman, um we've received uh hazardous materials report on the one property and staff still intend to uh get that done before spring thaw. Uh because we don't know when that will be. Uh the other one actually will be on for sale. That is the and I think we provided an update to council on that. That is the one in Rochester. We're trying to sell it as is where is so um hopefully we have these to resolve this spread.
Okay, thank you so much. Um on the next page, page twenty eight uh with regards to uh the capital projects uh CC two four three four four. Um that would, I guess I put my P beside that one as a priority as well, just for information. Um further down of that same page, just as a status question with regards to CC two four dash three nine eight that council authorized administration to take necessary steps to place the properties identified in Rochester for sale by public tender or by the similar and competitive process. Was that referring to just what you had mentioned?
Yes, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh the next one down CC two four dash four four three. Um just curious if Amber Valley has reached out with regards to any information coming forward on the status of their grant.
Uh Mr. Chair members of the committee, we have not heard anything from Amber Valley for for quite some time on this application.
Okay, thank you very much. Um next page, page twenty nine. I believe the first item there CC dash twenty four five sixteen letters were sent, if I'm not mistaken, on that one to
That's correct, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, and so we're that's still just a ongoing, okay, in progress. Um and it is the same thing. Next one down two four dash five one eight. The council supports the fire smart grant application as presented. Um is that grant just?
We submitted them and we were successful in so so.
Okay, so it can be removed? Okay, perfect. So we can take one more off. Excellent. Okay, so that can come off. Um and again, we talked about the level of service discussion. So there are several of them on here. The water to postpone, which I believe this is water CC dash two four five seven three to po- uh to postpone until council has been able to have a discussion at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting providing specific direction on how we would like water rates lowered. I think we did that, didn't we?
I believe you did as well, Ms. Chairman. Um I believe you passed the motion and it'll be on the action list somewhere. Uh speaking to the exact things that council wanted us to bring back in the report. There were a list of things.
Perfect. So that one can come off as well. Um course, the operating budgets and and that's another P for me, another uh process, the budget aspect of things. And as I mentioned, when we flip over into page thirty, all of the intergovernmental agreements for me are priorities. Um but that, like I say, these are just my personal opinions. Um and I believe the last item on that page uh see uh CC two five dash three nine to direct admin to schedule and advertise a public hearing on February twenty seventh. That can is done, I'm assuming. So that can come off as well. So that's another one to get rid of. Um level of service discussions all in there. I'm just going through the next page thirty one. There's more inter- intergovernmental relations there um for agreements and funding and whatnot um that I recommend or uh my personal opinion are are priorities. The last one on that page to authorize uh C A O back to brief Council Gerlock on the closed session items. Is that done?
Uh it is not done.
All right. And Mr. Gerlock, do you require an update or can we remove that and rescind it? Okay, do we need to put a a motion to remove it or we can just be happy that it's done? Do we need a motion to rescind that?
I don't know how you're doing the rest of them, Mr. Chairman. Uh are you making them? Why don't you make one motion at the end to rescind all that you discussed at the meeting?
Well, I I I would love to, but last time we did, we grouped it. We ended up and so that's why.
Then it's up to up to council or committee.
I'm just about done, so.
Well, I guess are are we okay with just removing that that one?
I'm fine with it. I just don't know if it needed to be formalized.
Okay, okay. I'll just continue on.
Um the last by page thirty two and that's what we're referring to our water rates. Um it doesn't have a a resolution number. It's the second one from the bottom. That one is definitely my my number one priority. And I believe on page thirty three, oh, pardon me. There's one more here. The last one on page thirty two, I'm thinking that as also could be. I'm curious. It's a conversation if if that could be.
So we'll reconvene the many of the whole meeting and go back to the table item of. Uh, roundtable discussions, action item list and Reeve Holland had the had the floor right down.
Thank you. Um, so I guess just in the last, um, I, I understand what was being said, but just to finish off the last item that I had recommended. Uh, as a motion to recommend to county council to rescind, uh, CC two, four dash one, four, one, which is on page twenty seven of your agenda package.
So. We have a, um, motion, we may as well look at this with, you have a motion on the floor right now to. Recommend to rescind motion, uh, recommend the county council or send motion CC twenty four dash one, four, one. Uh, any discussion regarding that? Seeing none, uh. All in favor of motion? All opposed?
No.
So that would be. Five, five, uh, four, one against motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And if I may just finish off, okay, great. Um, so through the chair to administration, um, just asking. On the, that same page, the very last item, um, CC two, four dash three, two, five. Uh, status on that one, if there is one to direct administration to proceed with the demolition of the derelict properties as presented in close session.
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, um. We've received, uh, hazardous materials report on the one property and staff still intend to, uh, get that done before spring thaw. Uh, because we don't know when that'll be, uh, the other one actually will be on for sale. That is the, and I think we provided an update to council on that, that is the one in Rochester, we're trying to sell it as is where is so. Um. Hopefully we have these to resolve this spring.
Okay, thank you so much. Um. On the next page, page twenty eight, uh, with regards to, uh, the capital projects, uh, CC two, four, three, four, four. Um, that would, I guess I'm, I put my P beside that one as a priority as well, just for information. Um, further down of that same page, just as a status question with regards to CC. Two, four, dash, three, nine, eight, that council authorized administration to take necessary steps to place the properties identified in Rochester for sale by public tender. Or by the similar and competitive process, was that referring to just what you had mentioned?
Yes, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, the next one down, CC two, four, dash, four, four, three. Um, just curious if Amber Valley has reached out with regards to any information coming forward on the status of their grant?
Uh, Mr. Chair members of the committee, we have not heard anything from Amber Valley for, for quite some time on this application.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, next page, page twenty nine, I believe the first item there, CC dash twenty four, five, sixteen letters were sent. If I'm not mistaken, on that one to.
That's correct, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, and so we're, that's still just a ongoing, okay, in progress, um. And it is the same thing, next one down to four, dash, five, one, eight, that council supports the fire smart grant application as presented, um, is that grant just?
We submitted them and we were successful in so, so.
Okay, so it can be removed?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, so we can take one more off, excellent. Okay, so that can come off, um. And again, we talked about the level of service discussion, so there's several of them on here, the. Water to postpone, which I believe this is water, CC dash two, four, five, seven, three to, uh, to postpone until council has been able to have a discussion at an upcoming committee of the whole. Meeting providing specific direction and how we would like water rates lowered, I think we did that, didn't we?
I believe you did as well, Ms. Chairman, um, I believe you passed the motion and it'll be on the action list somewhere. Uh, speaking to the exact things that council wanted us to bring back in the report, there were a list of things.
Perfect, so that one can come off as well. Um. Of course, the operating budgets and, and that's another P for me, another, uh, process, the budget aspect of things. And as I mentioned, when we flip over into page thirty, all of the intergovernmental agreements for me are priorities. Um, but that, like I say, these are just my personal opinions, um. And I believe the last item on that page, uh, see, uh, CC two, five, dash, three, nine, to direct admin to schedule and advertise a public hearing on February twenty seventh. That can, is done, I'm assuming, so that can come off as well, so that's another one to get rid of, um. Level of service discussions all in there, I'm just going through the next page thirty one. There's more inter, intergovernmental relations there, um, for agreements and funding and whatnot, um, that I recommend or, uh, my personal opinion are, are priorities. The last one, um, on that page to authorize, uh, CAO back to brief Council Gerlock on the closed session items, is that done?
Uh, it is not done.
Okay. All right, and Mr. Gerlock, do you require an update or can we remove that and rescind it? Okay, do we need to put a, a motion to remove it, or we can just be happy that it's done? Do we need a motion? To rescind that?
I don't know how you're doing the rest of them, Mr. Chairman, uh, are you making them, why don't you make one motion at the end to rescind all that you discussed at the meeting?
Well, I, I, I would love to, but last time we did, we grouped it, we ended up, and so that's why.
Then it's up to, up to council or committee.
I'm just about done, so.
Well, I guess, are, are we okay with just removing that, that one?
I'm fine with it, I just don't know if it needed to be formalized.
Also, okay, okay, I'll just continue on.
Okay. Um. The last by, page thirty two, and that's what we're referring to, our water rates, um, it doesn't have a, a resolution number, it's the second one from the bottom. That one is definitely my, my number one priority. And I believe on page thirty three, oh, pardon me, there's one more here. The last one on page thirty two, I'm thinking that as also could be. I'm curious, it's a conversation if, if that could be rescinded because we get those in our monthly reports, but I think we'll leave that for another day, um. Page thirty three, in the meeting calendars, there's no resolution number next to it, I just wanted to give an update. That March sixth for the town is probably not going to happen, being that there is an Alberta Muni, uh, conference type. Uh, caucus meeting on the sixth and the seventh, so, um, again, there's no resolution, it's just for information, and I'm done.
Which one is that, the one that's thirty three, oh, okay.
Second one from the bottom on page thirty three, that had been proposed to the town of Athabasca, March sixth, pardon me, I don't have my mic on. That had been proposed to the town of Athabasca in March sixth, so there's a date for the Athabasca County Town Inter Municipal Committee meeting. Being that there is the Muni Conference, there's, I think it's a caucus type conference, I'm not exactly sure what they call it, but it's on sixth and seventh, I'm assuming that they.
So could, uh, do you have any, uh? Um, any reason, Counselor Hall, that we can't remove this one? And look at, uh, at what administration was saying, or CEO was saying he'll check with the town and see when they, we could meet?
There's, uh, I think the spirit of that motion was to arrange a meeting time and we just proposed that as a date, so. I, I think it's. Some, something needs to be on there, just pick a date and let's get a, a meeting set up.
Okay, well, we won't remove it then. Okay, um. I think the ones that I had actually to talk about, I think we are, we just did, so anybody else, anybody else got any? Okay, so, um, do we need a mo, oh? Counselor. Anderson.
Thank you. Would it be possible through the chair to administration to request that the strategic plan? Progress, uh, priorities document that was included in our. What agenda package is this? June twenty seventh, county council meeting agenda package, just be re emailed to all the counselors so we can have another look at that before our next county meeting on our own. Um, just so we have a clean copy to kind of look at, jot down, thanks.
Uh, and I'm assuming that relates to CC two, nine, but, oh, sorry, page twenty seven, second one up. Thank you. Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we need a motion for that, or just the administration's going to do it? Okay, um, any other discussion? Doesn't look like it, so we will. Everybody's on the understanding there, we'll move on to CAO update. We have, uh. I guess there is, is there any questions to the CAO?
Yeah, just got one, I just see in the meetings they're met with blue hair and I'm assuming that's over agreements, that type of thing. Sorry, you've met with blue heron, and I'm assuming that's over agreements, that type of thing?
Yes, uh, one of the members of the Blue Heron Association just came in and had some requests.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions to the CAO? Looks like, uh, mine is just a comment there, looks like the, uh, better project manager for the water line, which is awesome. Yeah, thank you very much.
Ms. Chairman, we, we have an agreement, um, I think today, so.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, I guess we'll move on to department updates. First one being corporate services department update. Any? Any discussion, Reeve Holland?
Thank you so much, um, just a quick notation, I know it's probably just a correction that. Minor, minor correction, but I'm assuming this is for January and not December, right, okay, cool, just wanted to make sure that that's clarified. Um, with regards to, um, what I've been noticing throughout here, um, monitors and, and chairing and chairs and whatnot. It's really nice to see that ergonomics are, are being looked at, so thank you very much for that, that's huge, hugely important for, for staff for their long days. Um, I also noticed as well the mental health, first aid, uh, certification that's going around, that's another really great and, uh, initiative and, and, uh, project that was taken on. And I appreciate seeing those, those things and the betterment of, of staff, that's fantastic. Um, the one thing I noticed, uh, under communications, um, I think it's great, there was a nice update on the website with regards to enforcement services. But I noticed the phone number for complaints was removed and a form, online form was the, is that the best choice then for people to, uh, submit complaints now rather than phone is to do an online form?
I believe the dispatch number should still be on the website, it's just that it wasn't being directed to the front office. So now it's just going more direct to awards enforcement services, from my understanding, I can double check that for you though.
Okay, so is it, is it supposed to go to the main line, the, the calls? Is, is, and my question was, is because some, some people don't have internet, are they, you know, those, those types of things?
Uh, I'm gonna look into that and get back to you.
I appreciate it, no, thank you very much, uh. And if I may just carry on, um, and again, health and safety, I, I, I highlighted the ergonomic, so I think that that's fantastic. Um. The community hall, first aid, mental health training, just going through my notes here, um. I think, yeah, no, I think that's absolutely, um, all I had for, for mentioning, so thanks again for the report. Um, it's really appreciated to be able to follow along and, and know what's happening, so thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else with any, any questions, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. On page thirty seven, under communications, it says updated the intermunicipal collaboration framework webpage. With the new agreement, the Summer Village of Bondis, um, which new agreement did we sign with Summer Village of Bondis, or is this just? Older one?
I, I was just sent a document and I uploaded it, I don't know how recent it was.
Good.
I believe, um, Ms. Chairman. All there was, was we didn't have it listed on our ICFs on the webpage, but we had all the agreements, I think that's all it was, so we, we didn't do any. A new one, it was just missing off our webpage.
I apologize, my phrasing on that was probably incorrect then.
Hey, perfect. Updating information. Go ahead.
Thank you, and on page thirty nine, it says that we were awarded six hundred thousand dollars for an Alberta Community Partnership Grant. I'm just wondering, uh, some more details about that grant, what did we apply for, or what project are we using towards?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, that was actually for the Highway sixty three services, uh, the six hundred thousand dollars between September twenty twenty four and August twenty twenty six. And part of that agreement is to have a cost sharing, um, agreement with our neighbors for those services.
Hmm, perfect. Right on. Betcha. Reeve Holland.
Thank you, sorry, just one more quick question, um, under communications. The finalizing the draft of the communication strategic plan is so awesome to hear, do you have an ETA on that?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, uh, committee, um, Jordan and I have just. Just in the very final stages of, of, of completing it, and the next step is to share it with the CEO back, and then it'll come to council for review.
Fantastic, thank you again for doing that work, it's, it's so very important, so thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other hands up or anything like that, thank you very much for the report, we will move on. We'll move on to infrastructure services department. And we are gonna run the gauntlet with. Everybody get their bats out, so. Yeah, Counselor Chamsik.
First of all, welcome, I just want to make a couple comments, um, it's great to see so much going around the county and seeing Bridge Culvert seven, seven, four, one, zero, being approved for STIP funding, really awesome to see that. Um, I see Public Works busy with, uh, heavy life brushing, plowing and maintenance, and it's just great to see, so thank you.
Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much, uh, through the chair to. Our new director, welcome, uh, to you guys behind you, thank you for keeping the, the ship afloat, we appreciate it. Uh, great to see that new sign being put up. However, the, the one issue that I have currently up in Wandering River. Are, uh, when the grader is doing the town site versus the snow plow. And when our plows come into the town site, all of our fire hydrants are now inaccessible. I think there's one that you can get to, and even though we do not have a fire pump in the town site. That is still a requirement, they can't fill up a port-a-tank, and they can be used for fire protection. And I've noticed that they are no longer accessible.
Mr. Chairman, we're happy to follow up on that. We'll, we'll fix it.
Have a look at that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, perfect. Uh, any, Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, um, on page forty four, it was noted that the Collington Truckville has been fully rebuilt with stainless steel piping, new valves. And just kind of wondering if it'd be possible to. Better advertise when projects like this are undertaken, I think that's, it's an incredible project, it's a great investment in our infrastructure. And probably something that a lot of people wouldn't necessarily see that we've done, but it does benefit our residents, and so I just think that. Um, it'd be nice to see that. It's a win for the county, I think it's a great win, and I just want to draw more attention to it and see how we can draw more attention to projects like that, so that our residents know. All these smaller projects that do make a, um, positive change.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, it's a great idea, we really don't celebrate the good work that does happen, um, maybe we'll take that away, and we'll see if we can. Instead of always bad news, maybe we'll publicize some good news, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's to show people that we're actually, you know, moving forward in some of our operations and stuff like that, right? Just to enhancing, enhancing the operation, which is perfect, so. Okay, uh, any other? Any follow-up? No, uh, any other questions? Um, looks like, uh, one question I have, looks like we're having a little trouble with Finnington. And, and Deer with some of their warranty stuff, is it becoming an issue? It's good now, yeah, okay, well, that's good. Okay, I know we gotta, we used to have to rattle the fences every once in a while ourselves to, uh, wake them up and, and that. Okay, perfect. Good job, maybe at RMA we can rattle a couple of fences too, so. You betcha, nope, everything looks good on, on my end, again, water, getting people in. Getting our, uh, our, uh, project manager, uh, on board, that's awesome, thank you very much for that. Looking forward to, to, to meeting one day. Go ahead, Counselor Holland.
Thank you so much, um, it's just for my, I'm curious, what does the acronym ESA stand for, it's on page, um, forty four, phase one ESA for possible landfills. I just didn't know what the acronym meant, acronym and. Thank you.
Love acronyms, so, okay, any other, uh, questions? All I can say is great work out there, uh, things are going good, so, as far as I can see, so. Uh, new county trucks are very nice, you know, they're not red. Just want to reiterate that again. Uh, okay, we'll move on to, uh, uh, Director Wilkinson, Community and Protective Services. Okay. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your report, uh, my one bit of concern, like an email with CAO here of, and for recent. When you come into Wandering River and you turn along the gas stations, we have two lanes that come in. And one lane that comes out of town, one of those two lanes is used for commercial parking. Uh, we've had a big issue with semi trucks parking in the one lane. Going out of town, completely bottlenecking that entire road, this is huge going into the nice time and early morning when you can have. I've counted eight or more vehicles parked with drivers sleeping on the wrong side of the road, blocking off access to the town, so. Would be nice if we can get a few more early morning and later in the day, you know, make patrols from our bylaw or try and curb some of that problem. Um, otherwise, appreciate everything you and your staff are doing.
Is, uh, just to follow up and then is the no parking signs still prevalent there?
They are still up and all current in the proper place, yes.
Thanks. Re, okay.
Just a comment on enforcement services as well, um, I have, to have, have received, um, people saying that there's feeding in the area of grassland, and I just want to say. Good job to the CPOs and enforcement services being out there, much appreciated, thank you.
Reeve Holland.
Thank you so much, um, I'd like to piggyback off of that one, I was just curious and, and, um. You know those digital signs that tell you this is how fast you're going, is that exists out there?
We do have them, but there is Alberta traffic safety laws that, um, I think that enforcement services have to abide by with those signs.
So are we able to use them? No, yes, no, how fast you're going?
Yeah. Ms. Chairman, uh, from past experience, and I, I won't speak to here, uh, on a, on highways. We can get temporary approvals to, to use the speed signs, I believe, I don't even know if we, if we have them, uh, but if we do, we can use them for temporary periods. Um. But not on the highway, maybe in the hamlets where a highway goes through, so there are certain locations on our roads, we're allowed to use them whenever you want. But on any provincial highways, there are rules around.
Okay, I just wondered if it might be a, a tool that would help try and make people realize you're going through a hamlet, you're going through a school zone. It, it's sometimes I know when people see it, how, how fast you're going, they tend, oh, you know, just wondering, it's a safety measure.
If you don't mind, I know in the past years and years ago, I believe that, um, there was some issues with that, with, um. I don't remember if it was the fire department or whatever that brought them out, but, uh, there was issues with that, uh, signs in that area. But I mean, you know what, things have changed and maybe, um, legislation has changed too, and I could be very wrong, so.
Yeah, yeah, I just, if, if it's, you know, a tool that can be used to help, I'm, for safety reasons, I think that would be great. Um, and if I may, just follow up on a few other things, um. One thing I was wondering about with regards to economic development and with regards to the microsite as well as the social impact lab. And where the social impact lab discussion was going from tri council, and I was just wondering if, if. Those two types of things are collaborating together, it, it almost seems like that's what the microsite is kind of doing. But then the social lab is doing kiosk type ideas, so we're just wondering if that's a, a collaboration that is being taken place.
Uh, the social lab is a whole different exercise driven by the province, I believe, so, um, not really. Um, you know, the microsite is something we've undertaken with our new website. And, um, you know, I think council's going to be really happy with the outcome there. And then social lab piece, you know, we're just part of the process.
Okay, um, just as we had a tri council meeting, um, here the other day, and it seemed. That they were looking for more information to add to their kiosks from the county side of things, that's why I was just wondering if.
Well, our active coordinator has been part of that process, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, um, community transportation, and, uh, it mentions, and thanks again for tracking all of those trips, and, um, it's such a well utilized service. Um, it mentions the usage of the trips being, you know, how many in the county, the town and the village, but are kilometers per municipality also being tracked?
As of February first, yes.
Oh, fantastic, okay, thank you. And that's all I have, and thanks again for, um, all of the stats and statistics and, and everything that's, that's going on here and, and, um. Very much appreciated, thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, um, it says that the working on the extension of the twenty twenty three NRED grant program. And I was just wondering, was that microsite included in part of that twenty twenty three program, so that's an extension there? Program? So that's an extension there. And. By extending the twenty twenty-three. Grant application, will that potentially limit Athabasca County's ability to be awarded that grant in twenty twenty-five? Like, do you have to spend the money for one year before you can? Move on with their applications or?
I'm not sure, um, but I can find out.
Thank you. And then my other question related to page forty-seven was. The contract with Fresh at Creative, when does that? Contract expire or when is that? Open again.
Um. I think, uh, April. Well, we were on a two-year, so, yeah.
Counselor, good luck. Hope. I come back.
Right now, there's a. I don't know, thirty-foot diesel pusher, whatever you call it. Parked in a residential lot. In in town. The bumper is about a foot and a half off the off the street. And we got a wood stove in there and somebody is living in it. And is that something that's allowable under our? Bylaws?
It's on our radar, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any, oh, yeah. Counselor Anderson.
Thanks. Further to my comments earlier about celebrating our our wins and our successes. I just want to point out that the deputy minister of children and family services visited our office. Like, that's an incredible thing, and. I hope that we can celebrate things like that more often because that that is incredible. The work that. The FCSS team does over there is great, and it's great that they're being noticed.
Thank you for acknowledging that because I was reading that too, and I thought, holy man, you don't usually get a deputy minister coming in, so. When you do, it, uh. It's awesome. So that means some great work is going on over there. So. Yes, celebration on that too. Uh, any other? Any other questions? Nope, doesn't look like it. So we'll move on to counselor updates. Let's, uh, uh, counselor Hall, do you want to start us off?
My updates are contained in the reports I've submitted to council.
Okay. So I guess we'll go to counselor Cromwell. Do you want to?
Well, I guess the, uh, the highlight of my conversation is going to be the. Tremendous, uh. Amount of happy people in and around the wandering river area for the approval of that sign. The messages and phone calls and text messages were plenty. And it is a. A great feeling knowing that we, uh, actually got something right that matters to the people out there. That was huge. Otherwise, the, uh, the forces in the far Arctic region of our. County are, uh. Consider or continuing to push on. We have not frozen yet. And, uh, it's about it. It's been pretty. Quiet and happy up there. Uh, regular complaints as in as always about. Uh, whenever we get a snowplow and continue to get complaints about the condition of the Plamon and connector and how quickly that road deteriorates. Uh. No matter whether it be the day that it gets. Its regular. Bit of attention or not, that road is a continued pain and. In my backside. And that'll be about it for today.
Okay. Counselor, good luck.
I think, uh. Probably the main thing that people appreciate right now. Is, uh, is the performance of the new greater operator that we have in the area. And. I don't like to. Suggest that the previous operator. Had far less experience. And this individual is doing now has far more experience. And it shows and. I don't want to devalue the person that was there before because they just don't have the kind of experience that. Other people have. And it has not gone unnoticed and people are very appreciative of it.
It is always nice to hire a seasoned operator. I know that very well. So. Counselor Anderson.
Thanks. I submitted reports about the. Recent items happening at the Athabasca Regional Multiplex. And Pembina Zone to counsel for their consideration. Other than that, I've been, uh. Focusing a lot on a couple of different RMA committees that I've been appointed to. And looking forward to the Village of Boyle. Athabasca County intermunicipal meeting.
Collaboration.
But, uh, council's given us some feedback to take back to that meeting next week, so that should be an interesting conversation.
Thank you.
Um, not a lot that's happened in the last three weeks, except for we had the celebrating rural women's conference. Formerly farm women's, our event was held on the sixth of February. Congratulations to Oglesorn and Diane Cleavy for Pioneer and Modern Women's Awards. Um, we're looking forward to starting the process of planning. I just want to make a point of saying. What a great committee it is to work with and the county staff just to make all that magic happen. Other than that, regular meetings with Northern Lights, uh. FCSS libraries I have tonight. Um, we also attended, uh, the tri council. In the community, Grassland Ages Society had their annual volunteer appreciation dinner. Um, it's all for all different nonprofits in the area like parent council, even CrossFida and Atmar. But most notable, the Grassland Fire Department member with over forty years. Of history and being a member of that department was recognized. Other notable events, uh, to shake things up this year for Atmore for the hoofathon that comes up in May, which has been like a. Longstanding event. There will not be a ride this year, but they will be still hosting a dance and entertainment. Um, I believe it'll still be happening May third. And other than that, for residential feedback, questions on when water will be coming back. And other than that, accolades to the roads, and that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Reeve Holland.
Thank you very much. Um, same thing, three weeks, um, has been busy. Um, so. Besides the regular duties that we all have or and and some of the others. Pardon me, in the committees, I did want to mention the Rural Women's Conference, uh, was. Well done, uh, well attended, uh, people were very happy, um. With the the whole day, there were smiles and laughter throughout. Um, I probably would think a lot of it was. Our wonderful MC Mayor Durco, he was absolutely a hit with with many people and brought a lot of smiles and laughter to the to the floor. He was excellent. There were great speakers as well, um, and the information that was shared, everyone went away with with something, so it was it was fantastic and and a big congra. Um, our modern farm woman of the year, and I'm probably going to not get her last name correct, but you can correct me, Darlene Cleavy?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much for that. So it was a fantastic day. It was well done by all. Um, after that, uh, day, I had to skip out a little bit earlier. I had a meeting with, um, uh, Ms. Margaret Anderson at the archives. And what that's all about was to do some searching on their historical photos. For an interpretive sign that's, uh, going to be, uh, hopefully installed in Collington. Um, hopefully this year, hopefully this summer. And it was pretty neat to go back through all of those historical photos back through from World War One right on through. So it was pretty cool. Um, also was, uh, had the honor of, uh, presenting Ms. Shirley Burzowski. Her ninety-fifth birthday plaque, and there was a huge celebration that the family put on. For that, so it was a fantastic day and and an afternoon to to celebrate a fantastic lady. Who has spent many, many, many years in our community. Um, of course, we mentioned tri council. Uh, we had county council and tri council the same day. I don't know if I would do that again. That was an extremely long day. Uh, but trying council, uh, was filled of up with updates, of course, from the town and the village on, you know, everything from Halleports. We discussed funding. Uh, we discussed, uh, funding agreements, clarification on municipality invoicing and whatnot. So I thought it was very, uh, productive there. Um, and of course, I continue with many phone calls. Um. There's resident meetings that are ta that have been taking place, um, or taking part in. Uh, as well as trail group, different trail groups and those discussions. I think we've all heard there's some. Some, uh, concerned citizens with regards to the reclamation that is legislated that needs to take place. Over in the Lake Country of of the Boyle area, and so, uh, trail groups and whatnot are trying to figure that out. Um, fielding complaints as well, but also receiving many compliments as well with roads, uh, in the area. People are really happy to see that. That was a great big Greater Banks are winged right back and and they're happening on a regular. So that's that's excellent. Uh, trail committee work continues. Um. Uh, like I say, there's been, uh, quite a bit going on with the Athabasca Landing Trail. Uh, revisiting the master plan, revisiting a brand new website that's coming up. As well as meeting, uh, like I mentioned, a few few tale, a few more. Uh, trail groups that have interest in the area such as Trails for Tomorrow, um, as well as snowmobile groups, um. And that's pretty much about it. Everything is. Pretty much, well, stays busy.
I totally have to agree with you there regarding, thank you for that report, uh, regarding busy, lots of meetings on my end. Um, just a couple of them to go through Athabasca Regional Waste. We had a meeting, uh. On February tenth, everything's going good there. EPR is helping us very much with, uh, financials just due to the fact that, uh. There's going to be some influx of money regarding. The EPR. And which will help us out in the long end. Uh. Lot of. Lot of agreements to go through regarding the EPR, some some, uh. Uh. Insurance issues and stuff like that, but. Our commission managers and CEO is working very hard and fine with that. He is on the committee, so it's it's very helpful. Um. Going through a new employee policy handbook, do. They're going to be doing their own, uh, payroll, as I mentioned before, so. Uh, there's going to be some new policies and that being brought forward. Uh, yeah, all in all, it was a good meeting. And then moving on to, uh, had an Alice meeting the other day on February twelfth. And, uh. Did, uh, it was more of a. Procedural meeting that we went through there. There we looked at one. Updated, uh. Project, but other than that, it was, uh. Terms of reference review. Project parameters guideline review, um. I had a presentation from Athabasca Watershed Council, very good. National update from Alice. And. And, uh, project prioritization, uh, how to. How to. Make it easier to, we're getting, uh, which is great news. Another thing to celebrate would be we're getting lots of, uh, projects coming in. And, uh. So, so. On the advertising and everything is the word's getting around for sure from from everything and and, uh. So we needed to come up with a little bit easier way to prioritize these these projects. So when we go in there, we're not there till six o'clock at night. So that went very good and, uh. Yeah, other than, uh. Other than that, that was, that was, oh, and then at the. And it should, and it should be coming out on the website if it's not there already, uh, if it is, thank you very much, uh. There's an environmental farm plan workshop here in Athabasca, um, being held on the twenty-sixth. And and that's more of an ASB. Thing, but, uh. Our coordinator gave me this to to make sure the, uh. The news gets out. A lot of these, uh. Funding, uh. Plans and that through the government and. Uh. You have to have an EFP, Environmental Farm Plan, to be able to get the the funding like for SCAP funding, RALP. OFEP, which I have no idea what that is, but they will. There's lots of this funding that you need this farm plan. So. If you know of anybody that. That, uh. Just spread the word. Uh, about this workshop, they have to, uh. Register by February twenty-four. And and that, so hopefully that gets. Visited lots. I had a, the other thing is I had a. And it's not through council, but I had a gun gun club meeting the other day of February thirteenth. And it's the AGM out there at the trap range and. And just wanted to bring it up that, uh, it's a very well-run organization. We have, uh. Uh, there's day passes to go to the gun range for sighting and. Stuff like that, just a little promotion there to. To help it out. Same as the trap range, they're they're open from May till. Till, uh, usually just about October, depending on the weather or not. And that's another good outing that. It's like going for a round of golf. So. So, yeah, uh, other than that, I think everything else has been going good.
I'd just like to mention, you know, like, um, I so appreciate, you know, so many of your committees being very active, seeing them at lots of different events. I am going to tell you, Alice will also be attending, um, the March twenty-first Grassland Ag Fair as well, if anybody would like more information.
Perfect. Bet you there. It is a very, uh, it's a great committee. So I guess on that note, oh, what, oh, counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Um. I only had one comment originally. Now I have two, uh. I appreciate that chair. Every good rural municipality should endorse its, uh, local gun club. But the, uh, the one announcement I failed to bring up is I would like to, uh, welcome Tucker Jay. He is, I'm. Not giving the full last name. He is one of our newest residents in the county, born on Valentine's Day. So great to have our, uh, community growing one person at a time.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's, uh. That's pretty well done, the roundtable discussion, so. So now we'll, uh. Go on to business arising. Seven point one and. Welcome Chief Shalapai.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Minz, for having me here today. So, uh. Coming back from our previous county council meeting, um. There was some direction for us to go back and draft the cost recovery policy. Uh, in doing so, we've kind of opened up a bigger. Can of worms per se in terms of. Looking for council's direction in what we desire in a policy. Um, so we've done some surveying through other municipalities and there's everything from total cost recoveries. Uh, some don't bill at all, so basically the cost of fire expressions eaten up or, uh, part of the operating budget. Um, Parkland County just rolled out a new policy where they do. Have a bit of a partial billing. So for us, we have kind of several standing questions that we need a little bit of direction on. Prior to being able to fully move forward on, uh, motion twenty-four dash five four. Six.
Okay, so so we want to have a little discussion on this. What is that what you're looking for? Is it a little feedback or?
Correct. I'm looking for some feedback from council on, uh. I I guess, breaking it down, uh, what are we looking for in terms of cost recovery? Does council wish to pursue a a more robust cost recovery where we're trying to? Fully recover the cost of providing service. Keeping in mind budget pays for the fire service to exist. Um, do we want to pursue a more of a partial, um? Recovery where we have different options, we can do a cap on expenses, so. If we have a structured fire, we would recover costs up to a point. Um, we can vary that by type of call. So really, the the. The prairies are oyster. Um, but what we need to do, what we do need to know is, uh, I guess first and foremost. What does council wish in terms of cost recovery? Are we looking to try and recover everything or are we looking for more of a partial recovery?
Okay, so. So what does council wish for cost recovery? I guess that opens up a can of worms and. Let's start it with counselor Cromwell.
Do you want us to answer one question at a time on here or go through the answers we have written to our five? Before we begin, Chair. One at a time? All right, then, uh. I would be, uh. One hundred and one percent for a partial recovery.
Partial recovery. Okay, so, uh. Meaning partial, how? Like, like.
Meaning that. We subsidize everything in this county to one level or another. And that's why I ask if you want to go through the five because I kind of. Dumbed it down as I went through my answers in there. But. We have people that have been living in this county for. Forever and a day. And though some may argue the taxes are not sufficient. Uh, I believe that a lot of that is, we don't. There are not many tangible things that we provide to ratepayers on a given day that they care about. They care about water, they care about road. And you could add in there that they care that their house doesn't burn to the ground. And when it does, and they're having the worst day of their life. That they don't get. Hit with a multi-thousand-dollar bill. So I believe there. And I'm going to go through my explanation here. I believe there should be partial cost recovery dependent on. The differentiating between insured and uninsured. There should be a capped fee at no more than five thousand dollars. For insured and twenty-five hundred for uninsured that the resident may have to pay. I believe, yes, we have to take, uh. Into account. Into account whether there is cause care or negligence in the resulting of. I believe that there should be a differentiating between the types of calling and. Compassionate grounds, absolutely, uh, waived by council that should come to us in the big picture. But, uh, going down to last question, I think anything twenty-five hundred and other can be handled by our C A O. And anything twenty-five oh one and above would be brought to council for discussion.
Okay, so that's, uh, opened up some, uh. Anybody else have any discussion on it? Administration is looking for some.
I agree with most of it, some of the numbers, I don't know, I think that that could be a discussion with itself. But I mean, one fact that you definitely think about, um, when these, um, volunteers do go out, it is their time as well to go in now. Um, and it's services being provided, and I don't think that there should be a difference between. Uh, different billing types as they are the volunteers going out, sometimes leaving their jobs, those types of things. That's my personal opinion, but I mean, that's what this table's for and this conversation to be swayed as well. That's where I'll sit for now.
Can I reply to that comment?
Yeah, councillor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, while I could be swayed to. Support a cap, I think I would have to see some data based on the last. Say ten responses to each type of call on what the billing was on each of those, um. Because I just can't pull a number out of my head, I, I would need to actually look at what billings were to be able to see that. I also am quite opposed to a lower cap for uninsured residents. I think that that incentivizes people to not insure their property adequately. And I think we have a responsibility to ensure that we have adequate insurance on our properties. And I understand that sometimes insurance companies change your policy and it might take a little time to. Notice, correct, that kind of thing, but I really, I really do think that residents. Bear a responsibility to ensure that they are adequately insured, and I would never want our policies. To incentivize them not to cover, not to carry adequate insurance. And I feel that by having a reduced amount for uninsured, that's exactly what you're doing. You're incentivizing people to not have to pay the insurance premiums because their bill's not gonna be as high anyways. Um, so quite opposed to that. Um, as far as complete or partial cost recovery. I kinda went back and forth on that. To me, there's a difference between complete cost recovery, just. Just being the cost of the actual response versus the actual asset management. Of all the equipment and everything that sits in the hall, I would never get behind that. To me, the rates that we have set now are fairly adequate, um, to recover the costs of. Paying the volunteers and, you know, a little bit of. The, the overhead costs, but I would never wanna get to a point where we look at it like, okay, what's the cost of replacing the fire truck for every. Thousand calls and have to factor that in. I just don't think that that is a reasonable thing to do and. But I do absolutely agree with my colleagues' comments about these volunteers are giving their time. And there should be charges for that, there should be some income from that for that work that they are providing.
Perfect, Ma. Thank you, thank you for that. Councillor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to my peers across the table, but I take a great issue. In part of what is being said and. What you're, you're, you're con- how do I word this without getting myself into trouble? You're talking about the volunteers that are giving time, we have historically for, for decades been a volunteer organization. And now we're going, looking at a different model, and now we're saying we need to charge to make that different model work. For these people that have always been volunteers. And you're now trying to get in from a volunteer service here to take care of your community, you're turning it into a way to. Raise money and, and pay bills and I, I wanna make sure that's not how we're doing that, because I, I have issue with that. Second issue I have with what I heard is incentivizing people not to have insurance. Where is the incentive in losing everything you own, because the world we live in is a bag of turd? And I can completely understand that some people choose to feed their children, take care of their heat. Uh, instead of being able to afford insurance. I'm not saying we're incentivizing, I'm saying we are remembering that we are human. We are remembering that not everybody has the same situation. And we're looking at it through not just one. Set of eyeglasses, but through two, go, what are other issues? What are other outcomes? Because I'm telling you, it's not an incentivification to go, hey, we're gonna, we might, might. Cut two thousand dollars off your fine bill after you lost your entire home and every belonging that you have, but that's our incentive for you. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't think that either I misunderstood or the words didn't come out right, but we're not incentivizing, you know, taking care of.
I think on that note, um. It was, it was taken out of context in a way, it's not to incentivize somebody for not, for not, for not. Taking order insurance, it's, it's, I, 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 I feel the same way that, that. I, I think we should just put a cap on it and just be done, but, uh. Councillor Gurlow.
Yeah, I think life is always full of regrets when people didn't make the right decision or made a wrong decision and, uh. Uh, I think. It's very difficult dealing with some insurance companies, some people cannot get insurance or whatever. Because they're very fussy about the condition of the, of the building and whatever, even they. If your house isn't finished on the outside, the insurance company won't insure it or, or whatever, so some people just can't get insurance. Uh, it's very difficult. And we need to have a different rate between what we charge insurance companies and, and, uh. We can't use those same, those same rates in, in asking people to pick up the, pick up the, the, the bill when they're not insured. Uh, and the best point I had, I forgot. But one more point, oh, it's very, very hard on people who volunteer to. As, they, they wanna help the members of their community, they're, they're, they're there to help. And then when they see that their efforts. Are being charged out at a pretty healthy rate, and the community comes together and everybody says, let's help this person out. Uh, because they've lost everything, and you say, well, gee, we just about raised enough today to pay the county for the fire bill. It just doesn't sit very well, so I don't know what the solution is, but it's, it's an uncomfortable position to be in.
Okay, revolve.
Thanks so much, um. I appreciate, um, all of the opinions at the table for sure, um. We're in a situation where, when we refer to uninsured properties, um, it's a difficult, it's a difficult discussion. And I get it, um, I totally understand, uh, in experiencing. And the grand scheme of things, what that's all about when you're, a lot of your neighborhood is burnt down. And how many people don't have insurance, there's no mercy. There is no mercy, and it's the same if you're uninsured in your vehicle, there is no mercy and you're fined. Um, so to expect and. It sounds callous, but to expect the taxpayer to take on someone else's risk, I don't think is fair to the rest of the taxpayer either. Um, and I'll, I'll tell you, they're, they're dealing with it in Jasper right now, they dealt with it in McMurray, they dealt with it in Slave Lake, it's ugly. It's ugly, and that's where the community comes together, um, for benefits. The community comes together to have fundraising opportunities, there's Habitat for Humanity, there's all of these groups. That take that on for that reason, for the people who are unable at that time or unfortunate enough that they forgot. Maybe to, uh, re-instate their insurance, so. It, it is a no mercy situation, uh, in many places and it's unfortunate and it's awful. But people know they're taking a risk and it's a terrible position to be in. Um, but to place that on the rest of the, uh, residents, we are looking at, uh, Jackfish Lake is a perfect example. Eh, even though it was a wildfire and there was disaster recovery, it doesn't recover everything, so the taxpayer is taking that on already. So for me, um, you know, that conversation is a difficult one, um. But in my own experience and seeing how, how that comes, it's, it's just, it's a difficult one, um. The, the, we still have costs that we need to look at, and whether there's a cap, I don't know. I would like to see what some of these bills are, and I would like to see what a cap would like to, for that, to show what the difference is, to just understand it a bit better. Um, I like Kyle Lamont there, uh, on page forty, seventy-four, um. The community of Lamont, uh, does your municipality, uh, bill for service, all fires, all of them. But I like how their bylaw is looking at, um, when there's an accidental or non, uh, determined fire, um. I like that I, that comment that they're, that they're looking at. Again, it would be, I don't know what the cost is to investigate, to figure out if it is, uh, an accident or, you know, it's non-determined. Um, but I really like that a- aspect of it, um, I, I do complete partial. Without having figures, I really couldn't say one way or another, so I would love to, if it's possible, to put. A couple of examples together, just to have an idea of what that looks like and what the span is for an actual response. To what a cap would look like and what the difference is and where that goes, so that not only we can see it, but the residents can see it as well. Or, and for me, some of these things, you know, should almost be surveyed through the community. To say, hey, what are the residents willing to pay for their tax dollar? And so it's really, when, you know, if we really wanna take the politics out of this conversation, put it back to the people who we work for. And let them make the decision to say, hey, you know what, we're willing to do this, or we're willing not to do this, and it's their tax dollars. So that's kinda where I'm sitting, I need more information to really make a, a concrete discussion on this one, but I really like how Lamont's doing their thing.
Okay. Uh, okay, councillor Anderson.
Thanks. As far as the ability to waive costs on compassionate grounds and to appeals. I think that both of those should come to council. Um, I don't think that the C A O or any member of administration should ever be put in a position where they have to make that decision on their own. I think if somebody wants this, to request that the C A O look at the billing and make sure that the invoice accurately represents the response, that's one thing. But to appeal or ask for certain costs to be waived, I think always needs to come to council. Especially because that is then a subsidy on the taxpayers' dime and. I just, I, I have no problem with council waiving certain costs in certain situations and looking at that. Um, I think that we need to maintain that ability, actually, to be compassionate to our residents. But I, I would never want to see that put on administration's plate to have to make that decision. I think it needs to come here and be done in the open so that taxpayers can also see that, yeah, council did decide to waive that bill, but. You can now go and view the live stream and see openly why they did it, and I think a lot of. In most cases, a lot of members of the community would agree with that decision and, and being able to see that information.
Thank you.
Chairman, administration could not agree more.
Yeah.
That, um, it should not be a member of administration. Weighing compassionate grounds, it should be the elected officials.
I seen you waving, I figured, yeah, you know, she hit a nerve, um, councillor Hall.
Hello, um. We, I think it's pretty clear that we do provide a lot of benefits across the county to ratepayers and. And it's not unreasonable in my mind that we should provide some level of subsidy on fire services, so I, I also support. A, uh, a partial cost recovery, um. And, uh, regarding the, the fixed cap, I, I would, uh, pose an arbitrary limit, but really, like others have said. Like to see admin look at the last ten to twenty structure fires and figure out the billing and, uh, get some data. And see administrative recommendation on what that cap might be, you know, whether it's three thousand, five thousand, ten. But to figure out a number based on some, some kind of data that we can back up to. You know, we've often heard in this term about wanting to treat people fair and treat people equally, and, and I would propose to you that it's inconsistent to. Um, to charge different rates when folks have insurance or don't have insurance. Whether they have insurance or not is not really a question for us, to me, it's a question for the individual and if we should not. Uh. Reward those who don't do the right thing for whatever reason. Uh, we, it should just be across the board, everybody should get a uniform benefit, very much like we've done with snow plowing. Whether you've got a mountain of cash in the bank or virtually none, we charge the same rate on that, and I think we should do the same here. Whether, um, I would also support some kind of, uh, administrative recommendation or that, that would. Impact how we charge based on cause. Um, if you've, uh, you know, ignored a fire ban or a fire permit, I think the circumstance is different than if there's an accidental cause. Or for that matter, if, uh, if there's a fire that's, uh, shows up on your land through, through some, uh. Cause that is not related to the homeowner, like trespassers on quads or cigarette butts out the window. Um, I think those are different circumstances than, than. Um. Homeowner caused or resident caused fires. And then on the differentiation between call types, I don't know, and I would look to administration for an example there. Or, or a, um, some advice in my op- opinion. I also agree that appeals should come to council, like with the exception of maybe an administrative review of, is the billing reasonable? I think that can go straight to administration to make sure, does this billing make sense and is it, is, has anything? Has it been, has the process been applied uniformly? I think admin can handle that, but appeals beyond that should come to council. And then the last question I had is a question for administration, can you provide us an example of what compassionate grounds would be? Like I, uh, cause it seems to me that pretty well every fire that results in billing is some kind of tragedy. And, um, so I guess I just would like to know what, what do you have in mind when you say compassionate grounds?
Uh, through the chair to councillor Hall, um, our intent with compassionate grounds was, uh, a situation where an individual doesn't have the means to. Pay the bill, in which case normally the cost would be levied against the property, so. If an individual does not have the financial means to pay said bill, that would be a compassionate grounds approach to council.
Okay, that, uh, that sounds good, I, I honestly agree with, uh. What's pretty well being said around the table, I think we should, I think there should be a cap put on there, uh, we can look at a cap. And, uh, get some information back from administration on how it works, uh, what it's been looked like in the last few. However, many fire calls, I don't think we're actually charging, uh. Charging out for cost recovery, I, I don't think we are.
Uh, councillor Minz, at this point, no, we're not, we're, we're not recovering full cost, uh. In twenty twenty-three, when we passed a new fire services bylaw, we actually reduced our fire rates. Uh, we had a flat rate of four hundred dollars per vehicle for every vehicle that went out the door, we've dropped that down, so when a brush truck goes out, it's two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars now. Um, fire engines are at four hundred, but some of the supplemental vehicles, we, we lowered those costs down, um. On, for, for an information side, uh, most insurance policies, we found that when folks that do have insurance, it's a ten thousand dollar cap, most policies. And we found that with our rate scheme as it is right now, we seldom break the ten thousand dollar, uh. Cap on, on a structure fire, this, in the last year, we've had everything from a, a twenty-five hundred dollar response to, to, to nine thousand. What really haunts us and is a real tough metric is, is our wildland calls, cause I can see in the last two years. They've raged from, you know, like a few thousand dollars to four point six million, so, um, that's a, a much. Bigger issue for us to try and pull that on, but structure fires is easy and I think we're doing a pretty good job. Uh, administratively, we do review every call, um, based on the fleet that we have right now, a lot of our fire engines only see two firefighters. Which a fire engine, usually you want manpower, so we're seeing more trucks go to a call than are required. And on the administrative level, because that's a, that's a fleet issue, not a, a. Ratepayer issue, we already will review and remove any apparatus that wasn't required in, in that response, so. We are already doing, uh, a, a lot of work on our side, trying to make sure that we're being very fair and, and reasonable.
Thank you for that, cause, uh. I figured we were, I figured you guys were, cause we used to do it all the time also, we, so. So that's, and that's very good for people to know that, that that uh with that understanding, so thank you for that. And 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 the uh amount that it's costing us to go out, you betcha. Thank you very much. Counselor Chamsik.
In my notes, I did actually have that marked down, that I believed it was ten thousand when I reviewed my insurance. And I think it's great that you guys have that administration oversight to be able to um. Decide whatever apparatus you feel is adequate that's there, but my question is, uh, do you, do we, with these circumstances happening? Whether you call it compassionate grounds or not, do we have payment plans, options available for those residents?
Through the Chair to Counselor Chamsik, we haven't really explored the compassionate grounds at this point. This is something that we'd be looking for new. Um, historically, they've all been coming to council as as appeal or uh appeals to the bills. Um, this isn't something that we have built in the process yet and. Uh. I can let uh C O Beck speak this more, but I don't believe we have any sort of payment plans, options set up for any of our bills. Um, for us in the fire service, we do have uh hundred and twenty days to pay. And then it does roll onto land taxes, which then it comes, is recovered through tax payments, so.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, so on that, I I think we're sitting here right now, where where uh it's being asked to. To go back and 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 come up with some better understanding on how much a possibly a cap would be by doing. Uh, look through the the last ten or fifteen. Responses to a to a structural fire and and come back with them costs, is that what we're looking at? Go ahead.
Well, I think it should be. Um, ten or fifteen responses to each type of incident response, because. Then we can see if it's reasonable to have the same cap for a structured fire as a vehicle incident or. Uh, a wildland fire, what it may be, but I think we need to look at all of the different categories and then decide if we want to differentiate between a category or if we want to keep it. Them all the same.
Okay, I I I don't know about the wildland fire thing, it it it, there's a huge response there, that's 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 big. Um, I think maybe on a vehicle and myself, I think maybe on a vehicle and a and a and a structure. Possibly, but all that firefighting is, that's a different, that's a, that's a whole different. Fire in itself, so, but uh, how does everybody feel about that? For administration to come back with. Go ahead.
Is that quite a bit of work for you to be able to gather?
Through the Chair to Counselor Chamsik, uh, it would be, it's it's not a insurmountable task, but it would be a lot of manual collating of of the data. Um. We haven't quite ruled out our electronic records management system yet, so a lot of things are still paper-based, but it's not something that we can't do, it'll just take a little bit of time.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm okay with not stipulating that it has to be ten or fifteen as well, like I can leave that in administration's hands and. If they look it up and say, here's three examples, or, you know, this is what they think is reasonable for us to be able to make an informed decision, I I would be okay with that, like.
And and I guess with the, thanks, uh, I guess with, we already know that a lot of caps on. On uh insurance plans are ten thousand, right? So. Do we do that way?
Uh, Councilman, so that's that's correct. On structure fires, most most are ten thousand. Um, what a lot of folks don't realize is. And and I learned when I lost my insurance policy as a result of a fire bill in twenty twenty-three. Um, on the wildland side of things, it's actually additional insurance that you can add on after the fact that can add up to half a million dollars, but that is a. Additional rider you have to add to your policy. But in terms of of structure fires, ten thousand seems to be the consistent cap across the board with most insurance companies. Uh, we can go back and look into vehicle fires and equipment fires, because I'm not entirely sure what the what the cap would be on those. Um, but structure fires, it is certainly ten thousand.
Okay, Counselor Hall.
I just wanted to reiterate, I think some level of data and and administrative recommendation based on actual data would be. Would be really beneficial for us and help guide us in making a a decision. And also the comments of the last sixty seconds make me think that uh. This is an opportunity for us to share information with ratepayers in the county. Through our regular communications, whether it's in the tax notice or the other, but just that reminder that. To to look at their policies and make sure that they're they're covered, because. I would guess, you know, we're, we're not in an urban municipality. Things like wildland fires are going to be a big part of. Um. Could be a big part of the the calls we get, and uh just that reminder for people that make sure you check your policy and and add the riders you need to. As part of our our public education.
Hey. Okay, once more.
I agree with that, Counselor Hall. I'm really hoping that things like this will be part of our communication strategy in the future.
Um, so, does administration have an idea where they're going or?
Councilmen, we have a good direction here, so we will take this back. We will come back with some recommendations on a cap based on some data, we'll bring the data forward as well, so that uh everyone can review that. We'll also come back with a recommendation, you know, maybe on causation, uh impacts on billing.
Okay, and that'll be to a future committee of the whole meeting.
Correct.
We got you. We don't need to put a date on it or on, oh, just wait, Counselor Gerlock, you want to say something?
Yeah.
And Mike.
I just want to point out that I forgot to turn on my mic. Um. We have about a billion dollars in assessment for residential in the county in a four-point something mill rate, which means that it raises a little over four million dollars a year in taxation. That four million dollars does not go anywhere in providing the level of service that 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 people get. Uh, we are fortunate enough to have resources and whatever that we're able to tax and and uh and wherever. And spread some of that money around to our residents. Uh, and I think that compassion should be one of the first priorities. That we have in dealing with our public is to try and deal with things in a in a compassionate manner and and. Not be as hard-assed as as some choose to be and say we're riding on the backs of other taxpayers. Uh, we're a community that should care for each other, and uh I certainly don't have any objection. Of showing compassion to, with my tax dollars as vast as they are, um, to sharing that with with people who are. Have maybe made some bad decisions and and whatever. Um. I might as well quit there before I get too confused.
But I, I I guess I I I kind of uh agree with you, but there we are again. They're they're still able to, even even if we pass a cap or whatever like that, and this doesn't happen, they are still able to come back to council and say, hey. You got some compassion for us, and and then we can look at it, eh? You know, again, I totally agree with uh. Uh, Counselor Anderson there, it should never be put on administration to say yea or nay, whether we uh. Who who can, who can strike off a bill, that is, should be up to council, so uh, yeah. Okay. Right on. Thank you very much for 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 bringing this forward and look forward to seeing the next one.
Thank you, Councilman.
You bet, thank you. Okay, uh, anybody need a break? Oh.
Trail. Looks like we got some information on that. I guess, uh, fast falling motion. Move the council wallet to improve the trail base. Or on a trial base. Proposed route subject to approval from Alberta Transportation Economic Corridors and the Alberta. Snowmobile Association has permission to run on provincials one, two, and three ditch and highway right of ways. So we're gonna have a discussion. So where do we go from here? Why is everybody looking at me? So, um. What's that?
Go ahead, sir.
Here, please.
Thank you. Does administration have any? Uh, comments or want to weigh in before I ask a whole pile of questions?
Mr. Chairman, not really. It's in the RFD. We just noted in our research that. Other places have an agreement, uh, so we probably need an agreement with the club as to liability, insurance, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, maintenance, usage restrictions. Um, and the other question is, does this council desire some sort of communication from the club with residents before? Before it started. That's, those are the two areas that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I spent quite a bit of time, um, looking cause trails, I love trails. Um, and I definitely want people to know and understand that. The Great Canadian Snowmobile Trail is an incredible undertaking and is a great asset through our, our, uh. Through our whole country. And so I'm definitely very much interested in seeing it develop. Um, but I do have, of course, a few concerns, uh, with regards to the, the trail management plan. That, and it's in draft, it's a draft format. So, and one of the things that I, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it looked to me like the spirit of it was. Also to provide an opportunity, and I'm just reading from the document for collaboration. Between Forestry and Parks, Transportation Economic Corridors, the Alberta Snowmobile Association and other stakeholders during this planning process. So in the planning process is what I believe is where we're sitting at right now. Um, I know that, um, and I've sent it to council of request for a letter of support is still, um. On the table, um, I'd assume would be coming up to a council meeting. But I guess more than anything, when I look through. Part of this, I thought to myself, again, and I mentioned it earlier today when we were talking about the fire, um, subject. Is to take the politics out of this and put it back to the residents. Um, so it's up to them what they really want. We can't really go ahead and say, hey, because of course. This affects two divisions. I believe I don't think there's any more divisions in impact, but two divisions, five and eight. So it.
You're into three.
And into three as well?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, yes, it would. Thank you very much. So, um, for everybody to really understand the depth of it all and for, you know, people to make that decision, I think it needs to go back to the public. To have that conversation. Um, I would really like to see that the county. Send out a communications, uh, document to let the residents on the, on the route. Um. Know what's, what's happening, what's coming down. I had heard comments back from the last time that we had this conversation in twenty-three. September of twenty-three, they didn't know anything about it. And so they didn't get an opportunity to, to weigh in whether they were for or against. And I think it's very important that we encompass that and give that fairness back to the residents. So that's one thing I would like to see, uh, as a recommendation to council that, uh, um. We definitely postpone, I guess you could say, this draft. Um, until we've had that mail out to all the affected residents along the proposed route. Um, and in addition to that, of course, I would love to see the snowmobile, uh, club also do, uh, a public engagement, um, and bring that back. Um. And maybe the mail out will be helpful to them as well to be able to reach out and, you know, have people be able to reach out to them. So it's kind of how I looked at it there. And then when I was going through, um. The RFD, I did see that, as you mentioned, the county will require an agreement. Um, with the snowmobile club. So depending on how things go, I would hope that, um. We as a council would agree that, um. We would follow the guidelines, um, that the Public Land Act, Public Land Act. Follows as well as the, for the trail management plan. So that's uniform all the way across throughout from one side to the other, rather than having two different rules. Depending on which jurisdiction that they're in. Um. So there's a couple of things, and that's a huge job. It's not something that just happens overnight for agreements and whatnot. It's, it's a conversation that needs to take place for sure. Um, and then as, as the second one is, uh, we mentioned the mail out for the public engagement for sure, um, for the second question to administration. Now going forward and, and dissecting the trail management plan, um. There was a few things that popped up that I think that residents definitely need to know when it comes to the restrictions on the trail. And I believe that was on page one hundred and seven, and cause I was going through them again last night. Uh, before the meeting and realizing that there, that would definitely impact the enjoyment of. Residents in the, in this location, because it mentions on page one hundred and seven. Under the trail classification and the activity type, what the permitted uses are. Should this trail be designated? And it removes any pedestrian, uh, use. It removes any force, so includes saddle and pack endurance riding. Uh, and we're in a farming location here where people actually do use their horses for, uh. When rounding up cattle, not, not to mention for their own enjoyment. Uh, it also, uh, restricts, um. The horse drawn vehicles, uh, covered wagons, et cetera, that I don't know. There's much of that going through our ditches, but there's definitely horseback going through. It also restricts any kind of cycling, leisure cycling, mountain biking, which some do have those winter tires. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that it's a big thing, but it's just, we need to be aware. You can't cross-country ski. You won't be able to snowshoe. You won't be able to have your dog sleds. Um, and all those other types of items. So people need to be able to have that opportunity to weigh in and say, hey. Um, we do those things now and to remove that from something that I've been able to do, I don't think that. They should, they should be able to have that opportunity to say yes or no on that. Um, I went through this, uh, notice that the three-digit highways are not mentioned. Which is part of our motion. Um, so I don't know if that's something that will be coming up in the next draft or. If we are even going to be able to have an opportunity to have that conversation, to sit down with Forestry and Parks. And, and the snowmobile club and kind of go through this. They mentioned in here as well that there was, wasn't any other. Uh, regional plans for any kind of trails. And I disagree, uh, with that because Black Lavish County has an intermunicipal trails plan that they released. Back in December of twenty twenty-three. And it is very much the same type of connectivity that this is going. That this is looking to. Black Lavish is trying to do the same thing. And what, what this trail does is it limits our hamlet, uh, grassland. Whereas. If we considered what this intermunicipal pla- plan was looking at as well as, uh, the. Another concept that was presented back in, in, uh, trial, uh, tri-council. That we could actually expand this. In a way that would capture, um, a bit more in the county, keep it off. Of roadways and put it back on crown land. Um, so it then takes a little bit more of that liability off of the municipality and puts it into the, the crown land in the province. So I think there's other options, especially considering when I was reading about the ministerial orders. Um, as I mentioned, seven thirty-four, the highway, uh, seven thirty-four, which is actually a forestry trunk road. Down in the Rockies, that the ministerial order can be canceled at any time. And that worried me for the stability of the actual trail. Um, if they're able to take a designation away, uh, when they wish, it makes it pretty. And a ministerial order isn't required in public land. It's required in the ditches. So that kind of concerned me for the stability and, and the ongoing, uh, connectivity of the Great, Great Canadian Snowmobile Trail. Is there a plan B? And so there's a few things that I definitely would like to be able to talk about. They also mentioned, uh, for example. Um, are there any problem vegetation or weeds or invasive species on, on or near the trail? Well, Tansy sticks up out of that snow, whether you like it or not. And they mentioned, no, but it, it definitely is there. So. I think there's a few more things that need to be ha- hammered out with regards to the draft plan that I would love to be able to have that opportunity. To talk about, um, I could go through it. I've got several notes, but I would take up a ton of your time. They mentioned, for example, on page one oh four, some, uh, minor hand shovel and tool work along private fence lines. Mostly in the vicinity of the clubhouse by Athabasca, along Township Road six sixty. So I'm wondering, okay, what kind of. Agreements are going to be needed with landowners for them to be messing around with their fences? And then it goes end range road two zero five. Well, two zero five isn't any part of this plan. So I don't know if that's a typo. If they meant two oh four, I really don't know, but it's things that we really need to look at. Um, I don't recall in the presentation mentioning Forest Road North of fifty-five, but that's something that's been added here. Which brings up another concern because when you look at the trail going from. Uh, we're gonna say two oh four and head west on six sixty to eight twenty-seven. Then when you get to the intersection of fifty-five, you can either choose to go east or west. Um, and they really want people to head up to Jackfish Lake Trails, which is great. So you would need to go east. On fifty-five to get to two thirteen. Well. I can see a lot of people saying, no, we're not going to go all that way. We can just shoot up the road on two fourteen across fifty-five and get onto two thirteen. So. There's a few things that I would really like for, um, the opportunity. To speak with parks, parks and forestry, forestry and parks and just get to understand more about the drafts. I, I get it. It needs to happen. Um, May of twenty twenty-two is when these trail management plans were required for any kind of trail designation. And so these are kind of new, um, for everybody. And I, I, I would just love to have that opportunity to, uh, not only speak with the public, but. To just hammer out a few more of these details that are in here to understand them better and, and get those questions answered that I don't think that. We're able to answer here, if I'm not mistaken. No, we can't speak on behalf of Forestry and Parks. So, so this is where I kind of sit. Um, you know, if, if it's, um. Worthy of, of putting a recommendation out to council, it would be just to postpone, uh, a little bit, slow it down a little bit. Make sure we're doing the, all the right things. So it would be to. Put out a mail out to our affected residents in a, in a communication, get some public engagement going, um, with the snowmobile, uh, club. Um, and be able to talk about this, this plan, uh, that they would ask, they've asked us to collaborate on.
Um, now would that, would it be? I'll, I'll speak first and then I'll jump to you. Would it be better for the Skidoo Club to? Ask for the consultation? With, along with, like Athabasca County can go there, but. Uh, cause it's their idea, right? So they need to be able to sell this to. To the public.
Oh, I, I totally agree, um, that, you know, the, the, uh, snowmobile club should definitely hold a public engagement. And, you know, obtain that, pass on the information of what they want to pass on to, to the public, but these are impacting. Specific residents on along the route. And I believe that we as a council and we as a county have that obligation to at least communicate to these people that it's happening. I'm not sure that the snowmobile club would be able to have that same reach as a mail out as what the county would. And if we're talking, I don't know, a hundred and fifty people. Um, I have no idea. I have no idea how many people are along that route, but I don't think it would be that, uh, expensive to, to do that mail out.
Uh, go ahead, Councilor Jones.
Yeah, that was one of my questions. If, you know, going across number one, two, and three hi- highways and never mind our county roads, well, how many? Who are we talking about? Um, and the, when it comes down to, um, the activity type on two, uh, one oh seven you were showing. Would only assume that, you know, a lot of those, uh, knows have just come down to their liability, I would assume. But yeah, I mean, I don't feel it's necessarily our responsibility to put up, uh. Uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Town hall or anything like that as well. So, and I commend you and give you a lot of respect for the amount of research you put into this.
Councilor Hall.
So, um, administration has asked us a couple of questions. So let's, like, I just want to back up and remind council that council has made a decision to support this on a trial basis. And. I think, you know, subject to the, you know, the, the agreements that administrations recommending and the, the minor, uh. Corrections, we should be moving ahead and, and being supportive. Council has made a decision. We, we spoke at length about. The public consultation and in my memory, we're generally supportive of the idea that there should be consultation. But after a trial period, you can't have meaningful conversation when we don't know what we're talking about. And so I would refer administration in the answer to the question they, uh, outlined in their second bullet point. To resolution C C twenty-three, five oh seven. Where, um, there was a request to do public consultation in advance and it was defeated by council. And again. In my recollection, it was, it was to postpone it until after the trial basis. We can test it, see how it works. And then come together as a community and have something that we could talk about with knowledge. The other thing that I heard just now that I think is, I mean, a bit, um, maybe. Not. That missed some of the presentation of facts is this is trail classification is a winter trail classification. And it, as I understand, is almost all exclusively in the right of way. So, um, it's not that common. Anywhere in our county to see people walking, running, hiking or backpacking in the ditches in the winter. Uh, certainly I, I personally never seen anyone horseback riding in the ditch in the winter. Um, I've not noticed a lot of horse drawn carts ever, but specifically in the ditches. And certainly as someone who likes to cross-country ski. I would never go to a snowmobile track to cross-country ski anyway, because that's among the worst skiing I can think of. So I, I don't think those are, those are, um. Need to be serious concerns for us because this is not restricting. All of those uses in the summer. Seasons. But again, in the winter, we're not, we're not seeing bicycles in the ditches of the county anywhere. Um. It's just not. It's not something we see. So I, I don't think those need be massive worries for us. And I would hope that we can continue with the decision that council has already made. To support this and move on. This is a big, a real bonus to our region. Let's, uh, let's move this along and stop looking for reasons and ways to stall it.
Sir Cromwell.
Thank you. Well, I for one, I'm glad the council has the ability to change its mind. And fix decisions that may have been made in error in before, and that is the whole purpose of having a. Robust and engaging conversation. I'm very happy that we have that. And I completely stand by the fact that. If we are authorizing and moving forward to something that will affect. The, that landowner or those many landowners coming through their ditches. The idea of consultation after fact, hey, by the way, we approved this for a year and. We'll talk to you about it then comes across with, uh, a huge amount of hubris and. And I believe is completely wrong and misguided. And I'm, I'm very happy that we're having the conversation to. Perhaps rectify and, and reengage in some of those conversations to ensure we're doing right by our rate pair.
Uh. Reeve Holden.
Thank you. Um, and, and thank you, uh, Councilor Cromwell. As a matter of fact, um. Councilor Hall, there is that type of activity that's happening in these ditches already that I mentioned horseback riding just happened the other day. Um, and we slow right down for those people as respectfully that we should. Um, so. To say that it doesn't happen is incorrect. Um, I think it is extreme disrespect not to make sure that residents along the trail. Uh, the proposed trail, um, be notified that this is something that's coming down their pipe and to give them the opportunity as a stakeholder. To collaborate, uh, in the way they see fit. Um. I, I, I'm. Trying to get through to the fact that this trail management plan wasn't part of the presentation. So when we're given new information and updated information, we need to be taking that into consideration. We also made it very clear, this council has made it very clear, trails aren't a priority. And this is a lot of work for administration. And as we saw earlier today, uh, with our action plan that, uh. We've got to be very, very specific on what priorities that we're giving our administration to work on. So it's not a stall by any means. It's respect for not only our administer, our administration, but for our public, the very public. Who need to know. And again, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to know who's for and who's against. There is a very specific table. In this plan that, uh, requests ninety percent, uh, satisfaction. And so when you look at those kinds of numbers in this trail plan, which I think is, is brilliant. Um, to, so that it, it sets those parameters and everybody has the same understanding and eliminates a lot of those questions. Um, we've seen letters, uh, already, uh, in twenty, uh, twenty-three, I've, it's currently received an, uh. Update to one of those letters, um, in an email that I haven't had a real good chance to look at that I will forward once I do, once I'm able to forward that. Um, but yeah, I, I appreciate, I've, we've heard as well around this table. I think we've got that wrong. I think we made a mistake. And, um, this is a good opportunity and an incredible opportunity for a great Canadian snowmobile trail. To come through our community in a way that absolutely is, uh, we can be proud of. That has been well thought out and well planned and that the community as well as, as visitors are proud to come back to, want to come back to. And, uh, we've done it in a way that's been well thought out and collaborated properly. We haven't had a chance to collaborate with, uh, uh, forestry and parks, and especially with regards to a trail management plan. That I would think we would probably want to mirror for our own type of agreements in our municipality as well, uh, how things are done for on the roadways. So. Um, I just think it's the respect, um, is required for this and to do it right. And I, I would hope that council agrees.
That's Councilor Minza staring at me. Um. I'm not opposed to adding some communications to ensure that the public is aware. Of the plans that are happening and encourage them to. Um. Express their concerns and try to work with the snowmobile club on this project to shape it in a way that helps the community. But. I guess I have some concerns about only doing a mail out or targeting specifically the people who. Live along. The trail. Because I think that. A snowmobile trail would affect so many more people in our community. And so I think just a little bit broader of a range of communication would be more appropriate than specifically only. Targeting your communication to the people who live along the trail. Um. Because I think that. Whether you live along it or not. There's other people who might utilize it and their say could also help. Form a project that would benefit the community. Um. Far as everything else. I agree that we need to have some agreements in place, but. I also. Really question our role in this project and whether or not. Um. We get to specify exactly what's happening on it. Um, I think the maintenance for a snowmobile trail and the maintenance for. Uh. Skiing trail are just very different. And so if the snowmobile club is willing to commit to. Ensuring and maintaining the trail, I do think that they should have. Quite a bit of say on what they're approving to be happening on it. Um. I know as somebody who does horseback ride, I would not take my horses on a snowmobile trail that's being groomed and because they would damage it, like they would. Especially in the right conditions, you start getting that softer snow in the spring and stuff, they, they would break through and, um. So I just, I'm really sitting here questioning what is our role in this? What do we need to take? To encourage more involvement in it, uh, and to ensure that the project. Is shaped in a way that benefits the community.
I guess, uh, I'll chime in here a little bit too. I'm an avid, avid user of the snowmobile trail. I'm, I'm a member of the club. And, and everything they do, they do an amazing. And and everything they do, they do an amazing job. They they groom along the edge of the highway and out into uh south of of Baptiste and and down eight twelve, south of Baptiste and then across all the way over to Spotted Horse and everything and and down into Westlock and and when when they start grooming going across going across county road allowances, a lot of them are pretty tight. So I think that's where our involvement kind of comes into is is how do they get across there? And is is there, you know, to make it, I guess, let's go with safe. Um. And that 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 would be the involvement we have. I know I know going out west, there is some, there's been some mention of every once in a while of people going off the trail and going through fields and and stuff like that. But you know, when when you when you have a groomed trail, a lot of people will stick to that and and that so I can it'd be a definite asset, but I know going past people's places where there's never been a trail. The the consultation has to happen with them because we're 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 allowing a trail in our road allowance. That's that's the biggest thing. So. And exactly that to keep that to have restrictions on the trail is just due to grooming. I know west right now, there the the poker rally is coming up next weekend for this coming weekend and uh uh they do not want to see quads side by sides, everything on there because they've spent so much time and energy on on grooming the trail. And that's why they don't want horses and 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 that on there. Um, but that's my input on it. But I do believe that we need public consultation for sure. Now, do we do it or do you know, does does the snowmobile club do it with conjunction with us? They're the ones trying to sell this trail. We're the ones that have to agree to it. So they have to they have to talk to the landowners and sell it to the landowners and then also sell it to Athabasca County that is going to be be done in a certain way. Uh, the the grooming is going to be done in a certain way, so that maybe skadoos are going back and forth across the roads and and different things. But uh I know when they do try to groom, they 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 try to stay as far back from from uh the edge of the road as they can because they don't want to. But again, we get into tight situations. That's my input.
Reeve Holden.
Thank you. No, and I appreciate the words that are are being said here. And this isn't a a situation to say I'm for or I'm against. It's a situation for me just to make sure that what's going on is is um announced, um people are aware and they have an opportunity. The other thing, when when we talk about um a broader area, because it it impacts, you know, people coming from other places. I hate to remind you, but in we had a conversation for uh a survey for the sidewalk in Wandering River was only allowed for those people who lived on that side of the street when it impacted the whole community and the whole community was not invited to participate. So I find we have to kind of um, I don't know. I find it interesting that that it would want to be a brighter area when we don't do it in others. Um, the our role in this, we have infrastructure, that's our infrastructure that we have to worry about. Um, there are many sections along the ru- roadways that are too narrow. And so now we're looking at, okay, how do we stop the graders from making the bank so tall so the groomer can get through and then zigzag across the roads? So that they can't, because they can't stay on one side of the road. The trail is, and I would love to see that. Where where exactly is this trail going to be? Because we've got a whole signage plan here. Um, but where is it actually going to go? Because we can't stay on one side. So we're there. It's just, there's too narrow in several places. And so they're going to be zigzagging back and forth across the road, which of course is also a concern. But regardless, um, where is that trail actually going to be? What side of the road? When is it going to go across the road? How is that all going to happen? You know, there's those very specific things um that are should be hammered out. And again, there are a lot of holes in this management plan that um need to be hammered out. And forestry and parks are asking for that collaboration. And I think that we should um and responsibly give that to them. The other um role in this are agreements. And they're huge. They're not just tiny little agreements that are say, yeah, okay, cool. Um, you know, you and not to mention, I'm sorry to say it, but when you look at the email from forestry and parks, um, it doesn't mention anything about a trial. That information I don't think has been properly relayed. I was actually asked not to not three, four or five days ago. What was that motion? What was the motion? So I don't think that all of the information is getting through to properly uh make a proper plan. And so I think that that's important that the collaboration happens and that is on us. That definitely is on us. So anyway, I I for me, I would like to see a motion go through um that we recommend to county council to ensure that a mail out to all affected residents along the proposed trail uh take place. And then once we get to that, once we get that information back, I think that's when we go forward, when we when we talk about uh the different agreements, how that how that looks. But I also would like to see recommend to county council in a second motion after we have this conversation that we do a little bit more collaboration uh because we have new information with forestry parks and ASA. But that's where I'm at. And I think that that's fair. And I I guess I would say landowners would be great, but some people are renting and so that might miss them. To residents along the trail. I guess we'd have to be looking at tax tax rule to determine where they go anyway, wouldn't it? So I guess that wouldn't matter. So ignore my comment. I'm just thinking off the top of my head.
Do do we, do we have time to do this mail out?
Well, Mr. Chairman, my question would be what what do you want in the mail out? Because we're not the proponent. Um, so and do we refer to someone else if they have questions? Because we're if they call us, we're not the proponents, so we can't answer any of the questions. Uh, nor should we.
No, and I totally understand. And that's what I mean. It would be a communication to say that this is, this is a trail management plan that has been sent to the county. The Alberta Snowmobile Association is looking to do um, you know, expand the Great Canadian Snowmobile Trail. Um, these are your contacts. Should you have any questions? That's kind of what I would envision. Um, seeing, um, I I get it. We can't answer um these questions that are forestry and parks with regards to this draft. But there should be a way that they can look at it to understand the restrictions that are hap- going to happen in front of their homes now when they used to have that enjoyment. Um, to have that taken from them without them knowing, I think, is a a big disservice to our commu- uh to our residents. So um. Yeah, I would definitely just like to make sure that it's an awareness package or awareness sheet that says, do you know? And this is what's happening. There's a trail management plan. And I'm not sure if Alberta um forestry and parks would mind. I guess we would need their approval to say, hey, then when residents have questions, they either contact the snowmobile association or they contact forestry and parks. Um. Because yeah, these 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 types of things, like I say, there's a lot of holes in this, and I would also like to collaborate, like I say, with a with forestry and parks, just to make sure that the information that's contained within this management plan is accurate.
So I guess what uh on 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 that idea, I guess you'd want us to mail out, you'd want Athabasca County to mail out this complete this complete thing or what?
No, I I there would be a way too big of a package. It would be like a one sheet communication, point, point, point form permission with, of course, with um Alberta Parks and Alberta Snowmobile Association that um their contact information be given for any questions. And there'd be the link that maybe there's a link online that they could be able to pull that uh the draft one up. I don't know. But again, they've the spirit of this is to collaborate with stakeholders, stakeholders or resident stakeholders of the county. Um, collaboration and on these types of things is hugely important. I know when the Trans Canada Trail came through, there were months uh months upon months of uh engagement and Alberta Trailnet headed that up. You know, and they did a great job of it. Um, so I just think that that same this is not just a small little uh inter- intermunicipal type trail. This is Canada wide. It will bring a lot of national attention, if not international attention. And uh we need to be doing it right so that we're uh we can be proud.
Counselor Cromwell.
No, okay. So you you just want a a one pager mailed out to each resident along the trail? Would that be from uh from the Baptiste Lake all the way across through to
County Nightboard.
Okay, with the contacts of of uh the Skidoo Club, the the ASA or the Skidoo Club here?
Well, I believe here it mentions uh on here, provide an opportunity for collaboration, forestry and parks, transportation and economic corridors, the Alberta Snowmobile Association and other stakeholders. So I'm not sure if you would consider the uh river runners would like to have their name on that. By all means, I mean, are they a stakeholder? I would say yes.
Hmm. Okay.
One issue I have with that is if all communication is directed back to them, then we don't get an accurate representation of thoughts, opinions and what is being said. So I cannot support that. Um, because we cannot verify the quality of the responses that we get back. I would like to see you make a an amendment on that.
Absolutely. Yep. No, and I agree. Yep. A friendly amendment is if, yeah, that's what what uh council would like to see. Because we do, we should have an idea of it. Yep.
It it should have contacts through the chair to Reeve Holden, should have contacts to reach them for questions and comments, but we need to have a way to get an unadulterated version of those responses back and some of that conversation. Uh, it's far too simple to go, hey, so three months ago, you got that mail out. Give me a summary. Hey, ninety eight percent in favor. Sorry, I need I need hard data. I need actual answers to verify that.
So then you would put you your amendment would go to put our our contact on there or what? Because only man, this is getting convoluted, totally convoluted.
I understand that, but how can, how can we go? The results that we're getting are accurate. If we're putting out information when we cannot get the result. I would, I would think we could create a survey monkey to filter the results. And if you have any questions about go to this group here and then tell us what you think in the end.
I would rather see this Skidoo Club actually do this instead of us. Just and 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 then we can get the information from them or something. It's it's this, this is huge.
I get that, but you're you're saying you're going to you're going to get us to base our decision off of information giving us to us by a third party that is pushing for a project to go without any way to verify that information.
Hmm. If I may, um, at some point we have to trust as well. Um, you know, if forestry parks are involved, that's the province. I'm quite sure they would be interested. I know Alberta Trailnet did it. Like I say, they did a fantastic job and they provided the data. They, you know, and they did a great job at doing it. And you know, if it's it's some time that we get this information that comes back from the snowmobile clubs or from wherever uh forestry park, whoever chooses to do the the public engagement uh piece, um, and it looks bizarre by all means, you know, um, I think we could go forward, but I'm I'm pretty sure we can trust the club. As you mentioned, they do a great job. Um, ASA has been doing um the work as well. It's, you know, I don't want to make this as an onerous task for administration or the county. But we have to be fair in my mind to our residents to at least let them know that this is what's happening. I mean, the the people that didn't know the last time we had this conversation was, I was shocked. And so that to me is these are people's neighborhoods. This is not just a forestry trunk road at the foothills of the Rockies. This is residential farm area. And people need to know that there it it's going to change potentially, as you mentioned, poker rally coming up. There there like it mentioned in the in the management plan, there's going to be promotion, there's going to be events, there's going to be things happening, there's cattle that's right up against those fences. Um, and right now at this time of the year, they're pregnant. You know, and so to send them off running, not to mention, you know, they people need to know if they have to make provisions to put their cattle in a different area just to, you know, um, deal with those situations, people need to know. Um, so I'm just I'm bent on trying to get that information out best way we can.
I I I get what we're trying to do here. We're trying to protect our residents and I can totally agree with that. Protect our residents to to uh um before we okay this trail. But I I don't I don't want to see us have to put in a million man hours to do this for another entity that wants to put the trail across. If if uh if somebody wants to go and 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 put a trail through, I think it should be up to the people that actually want to do the trail to get a hold of everybody and say, hey, we we really want to, we really want to do this trail, but but the municipality won't let us put the trail in unless we get good feedback or get positive feedback from area residents. We're having an open house here. Please come and 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 talk to us about it. Because that we're we're talking a lot of hours of 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 getting this this stuff out there. And again, we're we're doing it, we're doing it to protect. I understand we're doing it to protect our residents, but God, we're spending a lot of lot of money for another entity that that they should be going out and 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 selling their wares first to everybody. And then proving to to the county that that this is okay. Because I if they go out and they start selling their wares, I'll I'll guarantee you, you're going to get calls. You're going to get calls with people that are are a little bit excited, but at least they're out there putting their time and energy into it prior to us having to send it out. And some people I'll guarantee you ninety percent of the people are going to say absolutely no. And then it's not us telling the trail association, no, it's actually the people saying no, but we haven't put in a a a whole ton of work. Because I I it this is big.
And and I appreciate what you're saying. It is big. And that's why it needs to be communicated. And the point that I would like to make is we did not get people responding to our small um business incentive, tax incentive, until we did a mail out. Now, did that take hours and man hours and tons of money? Don't think so.
But we hit, we hit uh, we hit certain people. This is
This is certain people.
This.
And we don't know it this time. I'd um for me, um, I guess if uh the county's not willing to do it, then I guess some councillors are going to be able to take that up or take that time to get that information out to people because it's not fair. It's absolutely
No, I didn't know. And I, no, it's not fair. But it's not fair to the county to have to go and and sell this trail.
We're not selling it. We're only communicate. No, it would not be selling it. It would be communicating to people. This is what's happening, possibly happening.
Why can't this, why can't the uh CSA or or whatever it is, why can't they go out there and say, hey, we're looking at putting the trail beside your your down the road allowance? And and we're out here to communicate because that's going to be the first question. What are you going to do with this? What are you going to do with that?
Absolutely.
And 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 put the onus onto them that that they need to go and talk to the landowners. And and then and then and then uh like I said, I'll guarantee you, the landowners are going to be calling the councillor saying what what is going on or or are you for this or or whatever, right? Right? That's the way I look at it. Counselor Anderson.
Um, I think what you're both recommending is you want community consultation done. Might I recommend that county council as a condition of us cooperating further on this requires the snowmobile club to do community consultation and come back to council as a delegation to inform us of the results.
Perfect.
Because then they're going out, they're selling their project. We know that information is going to come back to us. We know that it's coming back as a delegation. We'll have that opportunity to tell everybody we know to watch the live stream, to watch the delegation, to ask their questions so that we can ask them at that delegation time. Um, but I you're both going really back and forth here and I'm sorry, but at some point I'd like to get home today. So.
Well, and I appreciate that. No, I really do appreciate that because um we also have to remember, we've heard time and time again that it's a mistake not communicating with our residents. And so I'm sorry, but I think that And so I'm sorry, but I think that um their residents are gonna say, why didn't the county tell me? So that's where I sit, and that's where I'll leave it. I totally think it's a disservice to our residents for the county not to simply send out. A one-page communication document that says, hey, this is coming down your pipe. Uh, we are just informing you so you have an opportunity to engage with the snowmobile club. And I just think it's a disservice if we don't.
CEO Beck.
Yeah, it's true, Chairman. Um, so just an idea, if, if, um, first of all, we haven't. Talked directly to the snowmobile club about this since September, I believe. Uh, I don't think anyone on staff. Um, if they were, it'd be amenable to hold an open house at the multiplex one night to explain it and show some maps and. And it would be open even to council to attend to hear what they're, what they're hearing. Um, and if they would be amenable to do that. Um, perhaps our mail out could be um. Simply uh advertising of the open house that night um to be held by the snowmobile club. No, really no information from us, but if you want more information, please attend that night and um. I believe our staff could, could handle that kind of a mail out, but we're not the proponent. We're just making you advise that. That the club is going to do it, and so we'd have to reach out to the club and see if they would want to do something like that.
Okay.
I believe Counselor Holland had put a motion on the table. Can we please call a question?
Okay. Okay, so the.
What was it again now? Because I'm lost. I like the, what CAO back.
I wrote it down. So the way I wrote it down, it says, recommendation to council. Uh, that the county send out communication to residents along the route regarding the proposed snowmobile trail.
Okay, so we would change that.
Or you could add advising of, of public open house.
If, what happens if they choose not to do that?
I don't, we'd have to report back to council.
Okay.
But we could probably do, this is a recommendation back to council.
Right.
So it would go next week. In the meantime, we'll try to talk to the snowmobile club and say, this is what committee hall discussed. It will go next week. What, what do you think?
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Uh, I love to be, so. On the question. Oh, that motion? All in favor? Six, against?
Eight.
So s- six, four, one against, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, eight point one. Land matter, Southwest twenty-seven, sixty-five, seventeen, west of the fourth. And that's right here. So we have a recommendation that the committee hall received this report as information. Um, I guess getting down to. Talking to administration, how um. Is. Could he possibly? Could we close that road allowance?
Um, Mr. Chair members of the committee, uh, absolutely, that is an option, uh, road closure. Uh, what we wanted to achieve today is just to give uh the committee of the whole. Uh, or to give Mr. Gabriel an, an opportunity to present his, his case and, and his thoughts. Uh, to the committee of the whole, and then administration will be bringing forward some recommendations and um. Or a recommendation and some options for the council meeting on February twenty-seventh about this, but uh closing the road is an option.
Okay, so you're gonna be bringing information uh to. To the uh county council on, on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, um, Counselor Hall.
Could I propose that the committee receive this report for information? Administration uh has been clear they're gonna bring it back to us. Let's wait to hear what they have to say and then engage a discussion then.
Okay, we get into the. Now we get into the issue of. Yes, I. I guess we can, so receive, re- receive this report as information and. To. To send a report to more, more information to county council?
Uh, just the recommended motion. Administration has been clear that they intend to bring this back already. I think all we need to do is receive it for information and move on.
Okay, uh. Okay, any more, any more discussion on this uh, on this item?
I just have a quick question. I'm sorry, did. Part of that information that's coming back is with regards to leasing? Leasing the road allowance?
Um, Mr. Chair members of the committee, that, that will be part of the options will be, you know, what? What are the steps or what are the options and what are the steps involved with each of those for council's consideration?
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Uh, that would be seven and oh. Okay, so motion, oh no, I guess uh items added on nine point one, FCM, the, FCM discussion?
So basically, um, this is a Canada-wide impact, um. I guess it's a virtual meeting that's happening with FCM tomorrow. They're doing it all across Canada tomorrow for our areas at nine. Lock, I believe, or nine thirty, I'm just trying to get that open. But anyway, what it basically is, is uh impact of tariffs. On municipalities, and they were just trying to gain feedback. Um, from the municipalities on, on how they feel that this could, could very well impact them. And of course, the first thing I thought of. With uh regards to the steel and aluminum tariffs for bridges, um, and what that's going to look like and how, how. You know, obviously there's going to impact in, into municipalities, but how s- how severe of an impact that's going to be, you know, and how, what that looks like. And so I was just hoping to gain. A bit of a discussion on this to see where administration was sitting and where counselors are sitting and, and understanding the, the realm of the, the impact.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman and heavy equipment, which is. Yes, we, it's a necessary for us to take care of our roads and, and the last time this happened. It spiked, so, yeah, absolutely, that meeting. I'm registered for the one tomorrow morning, so we all want to learn more about it. But yeah, last time this happened, there was huge implications for us. So it's a good point.
No, and I appreciate that, because I would think that that's definitely going to have, uh. I don't think that's gonna stop there. I think our budgets are going to be. Basically thrown out of the water and we're gonna be trying to be very creative, and the more we understand better and, and as well as trying to. I guess so, show some solidarity with municipalities across the country on how this, how this is gonna be. So I appreciate you're also going.
Okay, uh, any other discussion on this? So I guess this is tomorrow morning at nine, nine thirty, something like that?
Yeah, I'll put it up here, just.
I think, well, you sent an email, wasn't it? Didn't the email come out, come, come out to all the councils stating that, that this was going on? So, yeah, you betcha.
Nine AM.
Nine AM tomorrow morning, F- FCM discussion. Okay, no other discussion regarding that? Okay, we'll move on to nine point two, RCMP discussion. That letter that uh came out from the minister.
Yeah, so, um. Ms. Chairman, um, further to that, to the letter that I sent to council, um. Um, I've already reached out to RMA, the province, um, and some colleagues and. Everyone's caught. Flatfooted, no one got any advance notice, so including RMA, which is kind of shocking. So usually RMA at least gets some advance notice and, and they indicated that uh they were not aware. So we're all just playing catch up today and, and I've reached out directly to the Seoul Gen's office and have not received a response. And that's all we have, um. Yeah.
To me, it looks like it's just another, another huge download and, and, and kind of like a takeover where all of a sudden you want to start taking. What's our property and doing what they want with it, right? So, and until we get more, more information regarding it, it's.
Mr. Chairman, that they, it seemed to indicate that it would begin tomorrow, um. Uh, February nineteenth, unless I'm, uh, just so you're aware, I completely intend to ignore the letter, because we have not been contacted.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
No one from any municipality has received anything from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs or the Ministry of Public Security. If, if they did, we would absolutely follow their direction, but we've received nothing. So I think there's nothing to follow.
This is kind of like a, a tariff deadline. Uh, go ahead, uh, Counselor Hall.
Um, just to provide a bit of additional information with the CAO just said, I know that some. Uh, chief elected officials have received letters directly from the minister. Or the minister's office that uh look identical to the one that was circulated to council to the um. Deputy Commissioner of the RCMP. And I think there are lots of questions for our council on this. That, you know, we obviously can't make a formal decision here, but we need to start thinking about, there's obviously jurisdiction issues, there's payment issues. And it looks like the province is trying to take a resource that we fund for our purpose. Because they've underfunded their resource. And uh, so I mean, the idea of ignoring it is one thing, the idea of sending a letter that says no is um. Is the other, but I, I know that some munis have received it. It also, I mean, wanna put on the record, it looks like it was a pretty rushed job. If we look at the letter that came out, uh, that was again circulated to council. The carbon copy is the carbon copy to the person who the letter is addressed to, so it. I, I like, I'm just not even sure if the minister's office has a clear plan on what they're doing here. Because that letter is basically the letter that went to some of the other um municipalities with uh, with the name changed at the top from. From the chief elected official to the deputy commissioner. So to me, this is a no. I don't even think there's jurisdiction.
Okay, well, yeah, I don't think we have to react to this anything until we get more, more information, especially if uh our. Great colleagues of RMA didn't know anything about it. They're kind of like our watchers and, and that and.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and we have received nothing directly to our chief elected official, so. Um, I, we have nothing to respond to. There's, it, it hasn't been communicated to us. It was shared with us by another agency, that's all.
Maybe this is just a vicious email. Push, who knows? Okay, okay, well, take that, take that as well, wait for more information to come about that. Looks like we have to take a motion for going into closed. Counselor Chamsik, it made motion going closed, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion passed, so, pass. Okay, so I guess we're out of close, so now we're gonna join or adjourn the meeting. Thank you.